We should be good, Lori.
All right, I will call the meeting to order at 6:31. Teja, would you do a roll call, please?
Bruce Bellargen.
Here.
Katie Thurman.
Here.
Roxanne Kendall.
Here.
Cherie Ling.
Here.
Patty Jo Porstberg.
Here.
Marge Bellil.
Here.
Lori Bellargen.
Here. District mission, together we engage, educate and empower all learners, bridging their passions through pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone.
Thank you, Katie. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Marge. All in favor?
All right.
All right, motion carries. We are to the portion of the meeting for public comment. Before we begin, I would like to get input from the board. Our policy is that each person has a maximum of three minutes for a total of 20 minutes given to public comment. And for this meeting, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 people who would like to make a public comment. So at three minutes apiece, that would be 51 minutes. So what I would like to ask the board first is if you would like to stick with our 20-minute total comment period, or if you would like to extend it. Patty Jo?
Is there any way to hear from the ones we haven't heard first and see how long that takes?
There is a way to do that, yeah?
I mean, because I would like to hear from the ones who haven't been able to speak yet. And if... That's...
What are the options, Lori?
I said 20.
That wasn't an option. No, I didn't.
The options were to stick with our 20-minute total or to extend it. And I didn't say how much it would be extended by. Theoretically, it would be, well, 51 minutes, you know, for three minutes per person, but it would actually take longer than that.
So if we did two minutes, that would be 34.
Yep.
Personally, it's either we listen to all of them in three minutes, or as long as it takes, or we cut it out to 20 through... I'm guessing this list is put together, Teja, as in the first ones to respond to you?
Yes.
So... That's, I think, our two options would be.
Did you have a preference?
I don't really want to listen to a long time of it, personally, especially if it's the same thing again, but I will, since they took the time, and I always request, always, but... I'll listen. Yes, we can listen to all 17.
Cherie, I agree with Bruce. Roxanne?
I do too, and I think they prepared 30 minutes of information, so we can't, I don't think we can cut it.
Yeah, I don't want to cut it too.
Because that's one called three minutes.
Right.
We can do three minutes, and if I have to leave early, I will.
Thank you. All right, and Marge?
Three minutes is okay.
All right, all right, we will proceed with a three-minute limit, and will you time again, please, Bruce? Thank you.
I'll yell them again. You give them 30 seconds.
Thanks.
That is doing 30.
Yep.
Somebody want to notify our school receptions?
I did tell him that.
Okay.
He's watching. He's okay. He's okay.
All right.
Hello?
Hello, is this Samantha?
This is.
Hi Samantha, this is Lori. I'm calling from the school board meeting. Would you like to begin?
Yep, thank you. All right. So I want to address the board today in an appeal to make masks optional. I gave a public comment at the last meeting, and I followed along with what each board member had to say. I do sympathize with the loss of loved ones to COVID. It's true that every life lost matters, but as a parent, I beg you to make masks optional. The loss of lives for COVID rarely includes children, and children don't deserve to carry the weight of what is deemed as protecting others. Every year, children die from influenza, yet we do not mandate masks for this. COVID is no worse for children than the yearly influenza virus. I listened to the data and the opinions of the board members. I felt disregarded when it was said that the 11 families who spoke don't represent the majority. This is wrong. We do, in fact, represent the majority. It is possible that others didn't speak up because they knew they would be disregarded. My voice matters, my child's voice matters, and my opinion matters. My child deeply desires to go to summer school but will not be attending if masks are not made optional. Please listen to the teachers and the parents. If you want a true representation of what the parents want, then please call them. Send a survey to the families enrolled in summer school and base your decision off of those results, not your personal opinion. If the majority of parents desire mandated masks, then I also said that. I just want to reiterate that the kids are already unmasking. I toured the school. They're not wearing the masks correctly. Please stop making them feel like criminals for doing so. One of the board members asked if the fire chief waits until the last ember stops burning before evening the scene of a fire. If we are waiting for the last embers of COVID, then we will be waiting for a while. COVID will not be gone in September when school starts. Summer school is a good time to ease into optional masking, less teachers and less students are present. Those parents who are reluctant to go to optional masking will have summer school data to look at in terms of the children being unmasked. My child is not an elderly male or female. COVID affects my child very differently than someone of advanced age. He should not be bound to the same protective measures when there is little to no risk for him. A board member said she couldn't cherry pick kids in regards to COVID fatalities. Have any children in this district die from COVID? In an email, a board member stated that they are hopeful that masking will be optional in the fall. Summer school ends in July.
30 seconds left, Samantha.
There is a significant difference in COVID existing and COVID being eradicated. Please, if you vote for masking, then I will assume that you wear masks when you are not in your private residence. If you don't, then you have no right to vote for our kids to wear one. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Hello, Melanie.
Hello, Melanie, this is Lori. You're on the school board meeting. Would you like to begin?
Yes, I was. So, as a public school board member, you represent the interests of the superintendent, family, students, and the general public. School boards are funded on the belief that students should play a dominant role in determining how children in the community are educated. Your reaction to we, the parents, to be pro-active, not reactive, is what we saw at the last school board meeting, as well as the inability to have a special meeting when four board members show up. You are the conductor of all that is best interest of the children at heart, but instead, you have turned this situation with masking into a push for your own personal agenda, which we saw when there was no special meeting held, when this very meeting was to show support for the staff you employ. It states in the board's code of conduct that it is imperative that board members treat all employees with respect and as professionals. Does that being done when four of you do not want to represent the 85% of staff who are wanting the mask mandate lifted? Teachers and staff have said they fear for their jobs if they speak out against masks. Teachers have told their students, "Please wear the mask so I don't lose my job." Is this how the board wants to conduct business, by their tactics? Sounds tyrannical to me. School boards with single or multiple members who work behind the scenes or who do not want to listen to their constituents cause enormous damage, according to a higher education leadership consultant, who published an article detailing this in the National Association of Secondary School Principals, stated that there are several ways board members can interfere with a school's ability to serve its students. This includes disregarding ideas for the superintendent, behaving counter to written or unwritten rules, conduct, supporting policies that are not in the best interest of students, making inappropriate deals with faculty or other board members in exchange for favors, and breaching the board's code of conduct. Does that happen here with Somerset School Board? Has the board treated their own board members with respect? We are two weeks out from fall. To my knowledge, it was not a super spreader event. The switch was flipped quite easily on allowing no masks for this event. It is time for the board to listen to the constituents, even the ones whose opinions you don't want to hear.
Melanie, 30 seconds left.
Time to listen to staff, teachers, and other administrators, and get control over masks. We, the parents, do have a voice. You need to listen, even when you don't like what the words, the words that you hear. This is a public school. You are here to provide educational opportunities to all kids despite their background, without discrimination, despite your personal beliefs. When you are here on the board, you are board members separate from your everyday profession. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Hello?
Hello, Chrissy, this is Lori. I'm calling from the school board meeting. Are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
You can hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, hi, my name is Chrissy Peterson. I am a mother of six Somerset graduates, and presently a grandmother to a first grader that attends the Somerset elementary. I'm asking you all, as kindly as I am, to please stop overreaching your boundaries with our children, teachers, and the school staff with mask enforcement. There's absolutely no reason for anyone to live in this kind of fearful state. This absolutely breaks my heart to see these beautiful kids suffocating with a piece of cloth over their faces. I struggle with the fact that you don't see how harmful this is. Do you not think that this will have a psychological effect on them in the future? I don't need a mask degree to know this is not healthy, safe, or mentally okay for anyone to wear a mask for eight-plus hours a day, inside or, for God's sake, outside. I'm sorry to tell you this, but you are not God. You are not in control of your children. God is the one to bless these parents with their children, to love and raise them, kind and caring, and above all, stand up for themselves so they can be strong, independent adults one day. There should never be a power struggle here. The parents are responsible to make decisions to the best of their abilities on how to keep their children safe, not the school. So please, stop saying you are doing this to keep everyone safe. It's not your job or your right. It's not too late for you to start making good decisions. And unmask all of Somerset School District immediately. I'll be praying for you all. Remember, faith over fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Hello, this is Monet.
Hello, Monet, this is Lori. I'm calling from the school board meeting. Are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, first I want to bring up a statement that Patty Jo makes in meeting on May 24. She says, "It's not the majority of the people," and she's talking about the people wanting to make masks optional. She says, "It's only a handful of people." I'm sorry, she says, "But I'm not going to represent a handful of people." Well, I'm sorry, Patty, but did you see the administration and teacher survey that went out? 85% sounds like the majority to me. And as for the community, you can't speak for them. You haven't even asked. Why haven't you sent down another survey to your community and parents of the students and actually asked them? Then, as Cherie proceeded to ask a question regarding Patty's statement...
Monet, it sounds to me like you're attacking an individual.
I am stating quotes from the last one. So, and now Lori, you continue to hush Cherie, which is very disrespectful. I'm just calling out the names of the quotes that were said.
I'm not sure it sounds like that. Go ahead, continue.
Absolutely, absolutely. Please don't be interrupting, okay? Just like when you hushed Cherie, and you said she already spoke quite a while, that's not forgetting a moment when Patty just interrupted her, okay? It's not about aligning with your rights. This is not a dictatorship.
I consider that attacking people individually.
Speak to the issue.
Lacey wanted to appear by a Google Meet.
The R is here in bridge.
Hi, Lacey.
Hi there.
We're ready. Would you like to go ahead?
Yep, I'm ready. My name is Lacey Oster. I live at 2199 59th Street, and I have three kids attending Somerset Schools. I'm extremely disappointed that not all board members are in attendance tonight. Myself, along with many others, are asking for a choice. I'm not here to debate if masks are effective. I'm not interested in listening to doctors because my husband and I choose our physicians and medical decisions for our children. I do not need the board to make these decisions for me. I'm asking that people put their political views aside. Unfortunately, this is when you're so politically cited instead of looking at what really matters. Be kind, be respectful, listen to others. You are elected to represent, to represent the community, administration, staff, and students. I'm asking you for a good representation. Having your own agenda or using your personal opinions to make such a large decision is not what is best for our students. I would like to circle back to a survey that was sent out to families last summer. 701 people responded, the most of any surveys sent to parents. Their opinions were important and strongly communicated. At that time, only 24% of the survey showed that they would feel safer if students wore a mask. I'm confident that if parents were sent this survey at the current time, the percentage would be unmasked. Has there been discussion about sending out another survey? No, this wasn't even brainstormed at the last school board meeting. Listen to people's feedback. Prior to the school year, our administration asked for feedback and took it, also forming a community group of input. Not sure if you've done the math, but also, in a recent survey to staff, 84% of the staff responded that masks should be optional after the conclusion of the school year. This is the data of our staff and our community. From a district perspective, there are many families stating that they were open enroll in other summer school programs or open enrolling altogether for next school year, especially with neighboring districts making masks optional. It would be my advice to look at this seriously. When students in our district open enroll in a neighboring school for a school year, our district pays an average of $10,000. The amount of pupil minutes in summer school is also used to determine state aid calculations. Less students, less money, less staff. At the last meeting, I was staffed with medical professionals with an unlimited time to speak, and I would love to have an unlimited time to speak, to share my degrees and my background in teaching and working with children. This pandemic has been hard on adults, but equally or harder on our children. Having a child with anxiety, we have struggled immensely with pandemic fear. Anxiety and mental health challenges are at a high among children. Families know their children best and know what their child needs to feel the most safe and secure when they are at school. This is a choice. This isn't saying, "Wear a mask or don't wear a mask." This is a decision to give to families and the staff the choice.
Thank you.
Ryan and Morgan have the same address. I don't know if it'll work.
They have different phone numbers. I don't know if they will be able to hand off.
I think that's kind of where they're together.
Yeah.
Hello, Ryan.
Hello, Ryan. You're at the Somerset School Board meeting. Are you ready to make your statement?
Hi, it's Brittany Ann.
Okay.
For having taken the time to listen. You know, I've heard everything that everybody has said. I couldn't agree more. I was, you know, just disappointed that I know the one woman that spoke of emotionally charged and the citing quote that Patty had said at the last meeting. I certainly wish that they weren't, that she wasn't cut off. It was an important statement for somebody on the board to make, stating that they're not representing the majority that us here that are speaking today or the majority of the more minor minority. For somebody on the board member to be so detached from what the reality is, even off the surveys from the teachers and staff of the schools, say 85% believe that, 84% that the mask should be made optional, and then to make that statement as a board member, who should be overseeing all of his primary objectives, should be representing the school district. I mean, if you just take a moment and breathe it in and think about that survey, you just think about it, where else could you go where 84% of your constituents disagree with you? And you continue to stand firm and not listen? I mean, as a military vet and a graduate student, I appreciate and understand our freedom, and I also really understand what dictatorships look like. And to see people, certain members on the board, just choose to ignore the task, sit there around the table, it's time to actually think and take it in and to say, "I understand that 84% of our staff and students and the majority of our community does not want this. It does not support this." Not even just the majority, the vast majority don't support this, but I'm going to choose, I, a board member here, I'm going to choose to go against what my constituents say. And I'm going to choose to make judgments based off of my personal decision. It's just unsavable for me in this country to see that happening. And so, I just will give the rest of my time up. You're just there. Well, how can you do that? How can you take your own personal work experience outside of here and make judgment calls based on how reactions might occur in your outside job? You know, when I was deployed, my second time at Genshin, I had to leave my career. I didn't worry about hurting my career. I did what I had to do. You guys are here. How do you do what you need to do based on the 84%?
30 seconds, Ryan.
I mean, it just seems so simple. At last, finally, this burden that you required of yourself, not something that we want you to do, certain people, the opportunity is there, you just give it up and do your job. You just refuse. I just cannot understand. I thank you for helping me in that today. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Ryan.
I'm sorry. No.
Yeah.
Is Morgan with you, or should we call her separately?
No, she's not. You'll have to call her separately.
Thanks.
Hi, this is Morgan.
Hello, Morgan. Are you ready to make your public comment?
I am.
Go ahead, please.
Tonight, I would just like to address some legal issues surrounding these COVID-19 mitigation strategies you have in place. Informed consent, which minor children are incapable of giving is required for investigational therapy. Regardless of the lack of safety and efficiency behind the decision to require a child to wear a mask, it is illegal to mandate EUA emergency use authorization approved investigational medical therapies or devices without informed consent. Masked use for viral transmission prevention is authorized for emergency use only. Emergency use authorization by the FDA means the products are investigational and experimental only. The statute granting the FDA the power to authorize a medical product of emergency use requires that the person being administered the unapproved product be advised that his or her right to refuse administration of the product. The statute further recognizes the well-settled doctrine that medical experiments or clinical research may not be performed on human subjects without the express informed consent of the individual receiving treatment. The right to avoid the imposition of human experimentation is fundamental rooted in the Nuremberg Code of 1947, as ratified by the 1964 Declaration of Helsinki and further codified in the United States Code of Federal Regulation. In addition to the United States regarding itself as bound by these provisions, these principles were adopted by the FDA and its regulations requiring the informed consent of human subjects for medical research. The law is very clear. It is unlawful to conduct medical research, even in the case of emergencies, which the state of Wisconsin is not in as of late March 2021, unless steps are taken to secure informed consent. Furthermore, by requiring children to wear a mask, you are promoting the idea that the mask can prevent or treat a disease, which is an illegal deceptive practice. It is unlawful to advertise that a product or service can prevent disease unless you possess competent, reliable scientific evidence substantiating that the claims are true. The mask box safe will not provide any protection against COVID-19 coronavirus or other viruses or contaminants. On top of that, your policies that you keep referring to do not give you any permission to use emergency use authorization tactics. Listen to the parents and make masks optional effective immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Hello?
Hi, Lisa. This is the Somerset School Board. Are you ready to make your statement?
I am.
Go ahead, please.
I was a registered nurse in critical care for 32 years. In my experience, personal protection equipment, or PPE, masks, gowns, gloves, were used to protect staff from gross and mostly diagnosed contaminants. Just to let you know, every year, under my continuing education, I was required to correctly perform the domming and dotting of PPE. What is that, you ask? That is the process by which a gown, gloves, and mask is put on, and more importantly, how it is safely worn and removed after it's been used or contaminated. Do you know that the qualifying size particle contaminants that can be stopped by the PPE live on the outside of your mask, your gown, your glove? In this very group, from the previous video and today's gathering, I have watched each member unsafely and detrimentally touch this contaminated piece of cloth that has been inappropriately tasked with keeping a medically untrained world safe. There has been no instruction. People simply add this piece of material or cloth to their wardrobe. As an instructor of domming and dotting procedures, from the word "go," I have witnessed people incorrectly put the mask on, and then the fun begins. As the creeps near the eyes, it's adjusted. Need a nose break? Pull it down and adjust. Snacking or taking a drink because of the dry mouth caused by a mask rub? Hold a mask down beneath your chin so that... Hold a mask down beneath your chin so that every last cootie on the outside of your mask is now on your chin and lifts. Then grab the mask, place it back over the bio load that is on your chin and lift. Only this time, the mask is removed for air exchange, so it sits our respiratory system to fight. We are re-breathing the crud with an increase of CO2. And now, depending on how many times you do this, twenty, fifty, what, two-hundred times a day? Um, this is describing the adults that I have just watched. Our children are expected to carry the same responsibility that I have to use. Each member in this meeting alone failed with overwhelming evidence. Children are not little adults. Most are not concerned with proper use as each of you sees at the table today. Are you aware that children wearing soiled masks are at risk of rashes and lip cancer sores, tooth decay, strep throat, pneumonia?
Thirty seconds, Lisa.
With, to get their faces, hands, and the horrendous anxieties from a very bad science gone wrong. Dr. Fauci, the director of the NIH, he's been exposed for lying to the American people. He has been recommending standards publicly that privately he boasts as scientific awareness to be safe, phony and false. That these unconstitutional mask mandates change to optional for our district.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hey, so, yeah, can I talk to people right now because I'm busy at the moment, but with learning and...
It's Cory.
Hi, Cory. This is the Somerset School Board meeting. Would you like to make your statement?
I sure would, thank you. Cory Miller here. Rochelle and I have three kids who attend elementary school. We're new to the community and new to getting involved in this issue. We have thought, we were very appalled by the previous board meeting conduct and lack of following the will of the majority of parents and the teachers. Most of us did not want to be community activists, I don't think. We all at some point decided we can't stand by to watch our freedoms get whittled away anymore. Your unwillingness to do the job you're elected to do is what brought all of us here, I believe. Once we got connected with other parents, we quickly learned that we agree on almost every topic relevant to our kids' education. I think we all agree that these mask mandates are just one of many ways the COVID-19 pandemic was viewed and was viewed as an excuse to shift our culture to be more accepting of an authoritarian government and authoritarian public school boards. The shift toward socialism and the authoritarian government during 2021 in America woke a sleeping giant that is the revival of American values. Values that the vast majority of Americans used to share, that the individual's liberty, freedom to live and raise your family however you want, provided you don't harm others in the process. Key value unique to America is leading the world in redefining true equality achieved by democracy. Using the process of voting and letting the majority of any group make decisions on any issue the group agreed needed to be addressed. The phrase, "Don't ever let a crisis go to waste," has become a popular political and financial phrase and a general description for powerful people and organizations to get more of what they want during hard times without having to be honest about their motives. The terrible irony to me about this phrase is when I think about it in the context of World War II. I studied World War II for my profession, and I can only imagine what millions of fallen soldiers and their families would say to us in these school board meetings around the country. I bet they would share without the story of the horror they witnessed while fighting the Nazis and Japanese, who were very close to achieving world domination at that time. I think the fallen soldiers would then say, "You're letting this crisis go to waste because you forgot what we fought for. You are giving up your freedom. You are letting the same authoritarian enemy widely take control of every part of your country."
Thirty seconds, Cory.
Thank you. To that, I say, "We, the parents, will never, not today, not tomorrow, not next year, or ever in our lifetime, let any authoritarian impose the will over the democratic majority without fight." Thank you for considering removing the mask mandate, making masks optional. I agree with all the previous statements from the other parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
This is Amanda in Donovan.
Hello, Amanda. This is the Somerset School Board. Would you like to make your statement now?
Yes, Donovan would like to go first, if that's okay?
Sure.
Hello, my name is Don.
Hello, my name is Donovan. I'm in eighth grade in Somerset Middle School. I want to say how hard it is to hear and see my teachers' faces. I want my friends and teachers to be able to choose if they want to wear a mask or not. I'm the only one in my school that can not wear a mask. And I think it is not fair that they have to. Everyone should be able to choose what makes them comfortable in their body. When I wear a mask, it is hard to breathe. Please stop making people wear masks against their will. Thank you.
Thank you, Donovan.
Anything else? You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Amanda Hind, Donovan's mom. We chose to move to Somerset twelve years ago. After meeting with other schools and evaluating their autism programs, we moved our lives and our family and later began our business in Somerset. We've been so grateful that staff has taught my son, who was not verbal at the time, to the outstanding human that he really is today. But it isn't that it's what we all do, as parents, teachers, community members, business owners, doctors, and board members, to help our little humans expand to their greatest potential. We choose to continue to be on Team Somerset as a family and keep our business in Somerset. If our justice and community are concerned and desire to work, you know what has to be, definitely, but have not been so good. Current survey to answer regarding that. And I would just like to know what people feel. Being accountable to humans, why do we understand how we feel for what they want? Why do the parents have the choice to be children? For this, our E.T. summer that we have with our children, why can we not put their nineteen-year-old generations in the forefront? One of the things that Donovan has been saying is that every day he comes home and asks what how hard it is to understand what people really feel and what emotions really are. And being autistic, it seems harmless for him in cases of emotions. And he feels guilty for not wearing a mask every day. And the kids that medical, it wouldn't feel like any children just got a mask at this point. Unfortunately, we've lost three deaths in the state of Wisconsin under nineteen-ten, the drinker. Life is worth losing, but at this point in time, we have zero cases within our school districts. I am a nursing student, and I am a professional biohazard removal, and we work with PPE and talk about and have to be turned down the use of our proper PPE. And these students do not have that. I do think it is important to update emergency use authorization. How it is not a requirement of using, they are children in our school to be wearing masks. And I just, we, because of Somerset, because it's different, it's started in the oldest of us. We really stand with some people. And I just really hope that they will take into consideration, we can pay our children, stand up to our parents, and they'll hear us. We've been so often down outside to be peaceful. And I know it must be hard as a board to watch investigations, but we hear painful that you're still willing to listen.
Thirty seconds, Amanda.
Thank you. And, um, I, for the reasons I just wanted to ask of the presentation, is all of the questions that were on the stage and questions that will be presented tonight in the eleven-way house of the summit, I'd read it. Thank you, guys. Have a great night, Cory. Good luck.
Thank you, Amanda. All the next three are through Google made.
Got a cozy little couch.
Hello?
Hello, Jackie. Are you ready to make your statement?
I am. My name is Jackie Olson. I have made several public comments and will continue to do so as long as our feel our voices are not being heard by the board members of this board, which was very evident from the last board meeting. Last Monday, certain board members didn't listen to the school district staff, the students, other board members, or the community, and the decision to require masks was all based on data shared by unelected officials that were solicited by the board president that didn't represent our community or our school district. As you all know, a staff survey was conducted, and you all received the results of that survey. The results show that eighty-five percent of the staff feel masks should be optional immediately or at the very latest June 11. Why did you even conduct this survey? You didn't listen to your staff. The survey, which overwhelmingly showed that staff feel safe with masks being optional, wasn't even the highlight of the last board meeting. Why? The masks versus optional masks wasn't even the highlight of the last, sorry, go back. Why aren't you listening to them now? Unfortunately, your staff is now in a terrible position to be in. They feel their voices weren't heard through the survey, so now they have to enforce masks in their classrooms. They have to continue disciplining students and sending them home, even though they don't feel it's necessary. This frustration was very evident in an email sent by one of our principals last week. As far as the community, certain board members commented during the last board meeting that the public comments were a small minority and didn't represent their constituents. That is absolutely incorrect. An online survey was conducted about whether masks should be optional for the Somerset School District students, and four hundred and seventy-one people in our community were polled. And of that, four hundred and thirty-six, or ninety-two percent, feel masks should be optional starting now. This shows that not only our staff feel safe with optional masks, but that the community does too. If you really want to know, I suggest a parent survey. Your staff is highly educated, and believe it or not, parents in this community are too. We all have access to data and are very capable of making healthcare decisions for our kids. I'm going to call you out, Lori, on last meeting because you said, "Once our children are in school buildings, you're in charge of making decisions of what's best for them." Absolutely not. This is a public school. Parents always have the only say in healthcare decisions for our children, not you. I am not naive to disregard the fact that when there is a pandemic or a health emergency, school districts have to make the best decisions for the district as a whole. However, we are no longer in an emergency phase of this pandemic.
Thirty seconds, Jacqueline.
We're trying to slow the spread, or hospitals are overwhelmed, or allow, and allow schools to remain open. We're just not there anymore. The policies a school district has regarding the guidance of the CDC and DHS only should apply to the times when we're in a health emergency, crisis, or an outbreak. We are in none of those situations right now and hopefully will not be in the future. Just like your panel of experts said, and I quote, "We need to find common ground and get back to normal," end quote, this is a community effort. I ask you all, please, put your own individual beliefs aside, listen to your principals, your staff, your students, and fellow board members, and make masks optional immediately. Thank you for your time.
Do you have your next person? Is Brooke or Blake?
Yeah, my son Blake is ready.
Hello, Blake.
Hello.
Go ahead.
All right, um, my name is Blake Olson. I'm a third grader, and my teacher is Ms. Ferguson. I'm happy we've been in school this long, and Ferguson has been a great teacher. I was disappointed that we had to wear masks this year. We don't even really get to sit by our own friends anymore, and I miss seeing their smiles. It's hard to concentrate in specials when I'm wearing a mask, and it's hard to breathe in them. They're very irritating and annoying. I want to remember a good year, not a year with masks on our face. I think it should be our choice if we want to wear a mask at school. I can't see anyone smile anymore. I'm starting to miss smiles. I don't think it's fair us kids have to carry the burden of being worried about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Is your sister Brooke there? Hi, Brooke.
Did you say go ahead?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Hello, I am Brooke Olson. I'm a student at Somerset High School, and I spoke at the last board meeting. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak and make a public comment. I'm not happy with how the last board meeting went. The majority of the community has spoken and most want masks to be optional. Eighty-five percent of teachers want the mask to be optional, and only fifteen percent want them instead. I don't feel like the community is being heard, the students, the teachers, or me. We have said our facts, done the surveys, and we are done with the masks. Watching the last board meeting did not show us students that there was willingness to hear each other's thoughts or opinions. Board members shut down other board members when they were speaking, and it seems like such a simple, common-sense decision that they were making complicated. You're supposed to be making a decision for Somerset, not just you and your agenda. Why can't we go everywhere else like restaurants, libraries, stores, and churches with what are required to wear masks in school? Don't make school a place we don't even want to come to. Please vote tonight to allow us to make our own decision to wear a mask or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Brendan.
Hello, Brendan. This is the Somerset School Board meeting. Would you like to make your statement?
Yeah, I got a little something for you.
Okay.
All right, hello. I've seen many emailing the board, seen many like myself leaving a public comment like now, and also gathering off-con before each meeting. I've mentioned quotes from the last meeting, but it seems those don't want to be heard here, as we witnessed earlier, someone got hung up on. Are we being heard? Do we need to be louder? We've done nothing but show respect, and I'm here to say that we can stop. We, the people, can get louder than a Somerset concert on a Friday night, the way that you've yet to discover. I hope you're listening, seeing all that's being done and said. I know one more, I know one board member is likely counting TikTok views, laughing behind her mask in the end seat there about a video shared from the last meeting. Or maybe even working on, maybe even working on her photography skills for an upcoming event here in town on the twelfth. Yes, Patty, both of us watching can see your computer screen.
You know, you need to address the issue, please.
Yeah, I'm getting there. I'm addressing the board. I look forward to seeing Patty at the event. That's community, right? Working together? I suggest you all make wise choices tonight, or legal actions will be taken against you personally for your actions. You each took an oath, a bold one. We, the people, will not stand down. Do it wisely, unmask the kids. Patty, yeah, we see your screen. Just have a good night.
Thank you.
Clean Play Handbook, in case you're wondering.
Hello?
Hello, Janie?
Yes.
Hi, this is Lori. I'm calling from the Somerset School Board meeting. Are you ready to make your statement?
I am, yes, thank you. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Janie Miller, and I am... My name is Janie Miller, and I am the parent of three students in the Somerset School District. As I stated in a previous email that I sent to board, I appreciate the decisions made over the past year and a half have not always been easy ones. I and others have not always agreed with the decisions made, but realize that it has been a difficult and unprecedented time. I want to thank the teachers and the staff for their resilience during this time. I truly believe that we have some of the best teachers and staff around. And upset, I am extremely disappointed and angry by the complete disregard of the desires of the parents, staff, and children of the district, displayed by some members of this board on the evening of May twenty-fourth. You have placed your own personal views and agendas over the desires and well-being of the majority. You were elected to represent us, not to push your own views on the district. Overwhelmingly, the parents of this district have asked for optional masks. Overwhelmingly, the teachers and staff surveys have shown support for optional masks. More and more of the children of this district are telling and showing you that they too want the option to go mask-free, yet you refuse to listen. What makes you think that your opinions supersede the majority? Do your job and do what we, the people, have put you there to do, represent us. In an email that I sent to the board members on May twenty-fourth, I outlined a number of my reasons for supporting optional masks for our students and staff members. So I would refrain from going over those reasons then. I would assume that a dedicated public servant is to be interested in our opinions and have taken the time to read it. Therefore, I would swiftly address the justification in starting that last meeting. In that meeting, a comparison was made about people laws, and it was noted that there are no laws on masks, to which the reply was, "There are rules, and the parents don't get to decide." Very well, let's talk about laws. There is absolutely no law that requires masks. There are, however, laws that give my children the right to a public examination without fear of discrimination. There are also laws that protect my rights as a parent to make medical decisions for my children and provide for exceptions to the rules, such as vaccination exemptions. Thus, it is my right to decide whether I want my child to wear a mask. The Wisconsin Department of Health, Health Department Advisory is just that, an advisory. It cannot enforce mask-wearing anymore
Janie, thirty seconds.
than the school can. Our decision has put the parents, staff, and students in a very difficult position, and the refusal of some of you to show up to the special session called VAC shows your lack of regard for the teachers, staff, and students of this district beyond your own agenda. Thank you to the board members who listened to the constituents. We will remember that. And to those of you who voted against the majority of parents, staff, and students, I urge you to reconsider your vote, respect the wishes of your constituents, and do what you were elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Uh, there were three other statements that were submitted in writing, and Tasia has forwarded those to the board. Uh, two of them were sent to our emails previously. Uh, one was not. I hope you had time to read it before the meeting started. All right, so... Uh, the next item on the agenda is school perception staff survey results, and I believe our representative, Rob, is here to address us.
Hi, Rob.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I got lots of windows open here, so let me make sure I'm muted on the YouTube end, but I'm not allowing your ears, because of microphone feedback. All right, and sharing the screen. All right, is that visible to you, a Somerset School District's spring twenty-twenty-one slide?
Yes.
All right, great. Well, thanks so much for your time tonight. Um, I am Rob Demeese from the school perceptions team, and, um, I will be taking through, taking you through your results this evening, uh, and I've certainly allotted some time at the end of the presentation to take care of any questions that you might have about school perceptions or your data and so on. So, in terms of who we are, uh, in twenty years, our mission has always been consistent. We help educational leaders gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. In that time, we've helped more than seven hundred districts do exactly what you're doing tonight, helping you navigate the planning process. In terms of your survey logistics, uh, your staff survey was run in April of this year, April twenty-one. There were one hundred and seventy-four responses, which equates to a participation rate of eighty-one percent, and this is good news. This is really solid. Uh, I'm happy with this number here. Uh, this is right in line, and actually not a little bit higher than what we've seen over the last year or so. And in terms of who took your survey, then, uh, again, the breakdowns here, uh, as I move through these next couple of slides, are above what I'd expect in terms of staff classifications, the proportion of where staff work, and their tenure, and so on. So, for instance, typically, elementary schools tend to employ more staff, um, than high schools, and that's, that's kind of what we saw. I'm, uh, proportion of your survey takers, a little over the third, we're from an elementary school, a little over a quarter, we're from a high school, and we have the middle school in between, and then pushing a tenth from your district office. In terms of position breakdown, again, like I said, pretty typical for what we see in terms of, um, you know, overall staff composition proportions. Uh, it's probably most likely that most of your staff are teachers. Uh, we have two-fifths of the respondents as teachers, um, a fifth each for instructional aid and paraprofessionals and education specialists, a one-tenth classified as other, and then a handful of other support staff and administrators as well. And then here, I'm looking for a balance across tenure, and that's what I'm seeing, so that's good news. Uh, we got a balance from one to two years all the way across ten. Uh, two percent of staff chose not to respond. Uh, but again, this is about what I'd expect to see, and this is what I want to see in terms of having some representation from all your employee groups in terms of tenure. So, then getting into the data itself, um, I believe that all of you should have received access to, um, the data. Um, and my goal here, because of that, is not simply to read every number on every slide. I know that that would not be a good use of your time. Uh, so instead, what I want to do is call on elements that caught my eye as I analyzed your data. So, looking at the, uh, at the outline first, before I actually get into any numbers here, um, these slides, for the most part, are all set up in the exact same way. So, the survey section from which these items are pulled is up top. Um, the one-to-five scale, from strongly disagree to strongly agree, is right below. Uh, note that there is no three, um, to help enforce a positive or negative polarity on each side. Uh, each slide then presents the actual item or question, uh, for each category. Uh, there is the, uh, percentage of your staff who, uh, declared that they strongly agree or agreed, the average across all staff, including the percentage of people, or excuse me, the, uh, number of people who answered the question, and then the percentile as compared to districts similar to yours, uh, which is actually how these slides are sorted as we move forward on this column over here on the right-hand side. Uh, and then this is a reminder, the fiftieth percentile is the median. So it's right smack down in the middle, half the district, at the fiftieth percentile at least, half the districts are above and half the districts are below. Uh, so the item here that I call attention to on this particular slide um, is the district's commitment to making needed improvements as they are identified. Uh, in terms of student achievement, it looks like Somerset is really doing quite good work in terms of social and emotional needs, um, and student supports, um, but may want to consider their curriculum's relationships, uh, to students' background, uh, down here, uh, especially the diversity of backgrounds that you may have in your district. With regard to staff engagement, um, I'm seeing quite a bit of data on this slide swirling around that median, that fifty, fiftieth percentile. Um, two things that I see here, uh, in addition, our staff are confident that they are contributing to the district's success, uh, but some staff aren't necessarily forming an attachment to the district that would really contribute. Slide twelve is your communication section. Um, so I'm noticing kind of a, a long-term, short-term discrepancy here as I look at this slide. Uh, in other words, your staff understand the goals of Somerset, uh, but when it comes to communication related to important issues, policies, and procedures, uh, they do feel like there's room for improvement there. Continuing communications, uh, the biggest areas for growth in terms of communication are related to the school board and support staff's just food service, uh, and custodians and maintenance. So I'm looking down here at these three rows. Uh, with regard to culture, this is slide fourteen, the one I have up. Um, so I'm seeing a spread here. Um, staff are really, really quite happy with how they are able to lean on their coworkers during busy times. Uh, that's really great, and that's something to hang your hat on. Uh, you have a few items kind of here in the middle hovering around the median, uh, from areas of growth, maybe with onboarding new employees, and identifying and acting on areas for improvement within the Somerset School District. Closest and intense staff believe the academic expectations for your students are just right, which is, in my experience, pretty typical for our staff surveys. Looking at work environment, um, this slide doesn't really call it a great deal of concern for me. Uh, in fact, every one of these items here is above the median, uh, and really, there's some, some pretty great views here in terms of staff having time, flexibility, and the materials and supplies that they need to do their job. Uh, if I were to call your attention to work environment issues, I'm going to slide down to the next slide here. Uh, I would highlight community support and building maintenance. Uh, but with that being said, uh, we did see a dip in community support or value pretty commonly throughout the, the staff surveys that we did this year, but that might be something to bear in mind moving forward, especially as you compile a lot of statistical data. Um, your health and wellness section actually looked really good, too. Uh, it was entirely above the median, with the exception of the wellness committee. Um, so I don't know anything about your, your wellness committee and their strength, uh, but you may want to dig in a bit more deeply into what they can offer, or their communications, or in what way the wellness committee could be improved in terms of people understanding who they are, what they do, and what they can offer to the district. Looking at development and recognition, um, you're entirely in the upper half of districts, with the exception of staff feeling like they receive credit and recognition when they do a good job. Uh, in that case, eighty-two percent of comparable districts had agreement levels above Somerset's. On the flip side, uh, while most of the previous slide, the development and recognition, looks really quite good, uh, compensation and benefits lean more toward the disagreement side of things. Uh, so in particular, uh, the pay satisfaction, pay fairness, and pay practices are all below the twentieth percentile. Uh, fairly widespread in terms of equity perceptions. So, again, doing great in terms of how staff feel students are given equitable opportunities. Um, if I were to focus on some additional planning, um, I would probably recommend training for staffs that they feel that students that feel greater acceptance in classrooms and greater recognition of, of their culture in their schools, which is a little bit of an echo and correlation to, to what we saw earlier on in the, in the survey. Uh, I don't believe I see any overly glaring issues related to building leadership, which, again, is good news. Um, if I were to pick out one item, uh, though, it would definitely be policy application consistency um, across staff from their respective building leaders. Turning to district administration, um, I, I think I'd probably call it a similar tone here, uh, communications and policy application consistency. So eighty percent of staff agree that the superintendent presents a positive image, but that is low in terms of, uh, percentile. With regard to the school board, around three-quarters or above of staff agree or strongly, dis-, or s-, agree or strongly agree with the items presented, but nevertheless, uh, there is room for improvement here, since this does push you to the bottom quartile of comparable schools for the three items I see here. Uh, and those include balancing the mission, um, and fiscal responsibility, presenting a positive image, and doing what it takes to make the district successful. Uh, finally, before I move into some questions you may have, I want to address some broader overall satisfaction components of your survey. Uh, the comparison percentile of the lowest visitor community support for education. Uh, and I did take a look at some of your longitude and bell data, uh, and I believe this was a little lower than past years for you, uh, but again, a data point that I can't say particularly shocked me um, for this particular school year in twenty-twenty, in twenty, twenty-twenty-one. In terms of recommendations, I'm seeing a chart that is much more top-heavy than bottom-heavy, uh, and this is really what you want to see. So this is the question that asks staff to, uh, recommend, or how likely, uh, staff would be to recommend a district as a place of, of employment. Um, because this chart is top-heavy, uh, that meant that staff were more leaning towards the likely or extremely likely, more so than the bottom. Or in other words, people are likely to recommend your district, uh, with an overall average of six-point-eight-eight. This slide, I'll actually turn, uh, ask you to turn your head maybe a little bit to the right. Uh, and the reason I say that is because I really do see some correlation between grade and recommendation. Uh, so when I do tip this sideways and I compare it to the previous, it, it takes probably the same shape, which is actually what I'm going to do, so sliding back and forth. Uh, if I look at this one vertically, and then I slide down here and turn my head a little bit, I kind of see some peaks around the B level here, or around the eight level here, um, which, the fact that the, that the data agrees with each other is what I want to see. I want to see a correlation between the two. Um, and so, taking the same shape, you're closer to the upper end, but nevertheless, a little bit of room for improvement here, with the, uh, majority of your staff giving the, the grade of the, of the district. Um, and also in terms of comparisons, the majority of your staff see you at least as similar, if not better, than, than, uh, than your neighboring districts. Stepping back from the data for a moment, then, um, the survey you deployed is able to build thirteen indices of staff engagement. So each index is fed by particular appropriate questions to produce a composite value for each area. Uh, and the thirteen indices can be further grouped into areas that we've dubbed our three Ps. So those include people, place, and process. Um, so the four people indices include work environment control, uh, health thrums, health stress and wellness, workload, and affirmation. The four place indices include equipment, e- equipping, calibration and te-, collaboration and teamwork, educational excellence, and building leadership trust. And lastly, the five process indices include community slash parent support and trust, planning and improvement processes, district leadership trust, communications, and equity. So, putting those thirteen indices together on one slide here, um, uh, what I see are some indices that are relatively close to the median. Those are the ones in the forties or fifties, and those are the ones here that I have not highlighted in any way. Um, your staff do feel really quite good in terms of their materials, their workload, their wellness, their culture. Uh, at the same time, there is certainly some attention needed in terms of building both internal and external trust, uh, communications, and affirmation. Last but certainly not least, uh, we conducted a comment theme analysis for you as well. Uh, it provides prevailing themes that we've identified from your qualitative data and presents supporting comments taken verbatim from survey taker's words. So, in this case, um, the themes that we saw here, um, our staff members see a need for more open dialogue. They would like to be more involved in decisions that affect them. Um, staff members do appreciate the additional work time that they've been given this year. Staff members would like more communication and positive leadership from the school board. Staff members would like better role clarity and professionalism from the school board. Staff members would like more consistency and support when handling matters of student behavior and discipline. Uh, the staff members expressed concern regarding students' academic and social emotional needs. Um, while staff members have seen changes in consistency of pay practices, they agree that work is still needed. And staff members shared what they liked best about the district, including the supportive and welcoming environment, and what they feel as a dedicated and pure, and, and caring peer staff. So, what does this do for you? Uh, this data is an excellent way to provide nuance and, and some really good clarity to your quantitative data. Um, so say, for instance, if your average on a question or index is a three, um, qualitative data can sometimes help you understand why a particular section is a three. So we really see some value in, in qualitative data from that sense. Um, nevertheless, um, our comments are not required. Um, there's no requirement for staff members to fill out any of the open-ended questions. Uh, so while it is for, it is great for nuance, um, usually what we tell people at board meetings is as you move ahead and plan, uh, that you should, that, uh, you know, make your decisions off these quantitative datas, and that's where you're going to see the largest group of respondents. Um, I'm going to take a drink of water, but I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
It's a lot to go through.
Yeah, it is. Rob, could you explain to the rest of the board the, how the sample works and how you get the percentile rank?
Yeah, absolutely. So, our comparisons are generated from a pool of similarly sized schools over a two-year running sample.
And that two years for this sample was?
Yeah, sorry, uh, good, good clarification. So that does not include twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. It includes the two school years prior to that, so twenty-eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. And, and we do that for every staff survey that we do. It's always on a two-year rolling average to maintain consistency of comparisons across any district that we do. At least in terms of timeframe.
Does anybody else have any questions?
So is this one of those we... Do we set up a retreat again to go through this, or do we just take, go through it ourselves and remark, I don't know, what we've really dealt with this in the past?
Well, typically, administratively, we'll build goal
Well, typically administratively, we'll build goals off of this. Last year and the year before, each building looked at things that were relevant to the building and put different themes embedded in the building goals. So, you know, we took these and addressed them.
Okay.
So I, I don't think we've had a retreat on, on the surveys, a very in-depth one. But, you know, that's, I think what the intention is, is that we, you know, have some discussion whether that comes into board goals.
Yeah, I do think we have had in the past. I don't know if it's. It may have been two or three years ago.
Well, we started three years ago on a consistent basis, I mean, at the same time of the year. Yeah, true.
That's a good question. Rob?
Yeah?
What time, when, you know, talking about the comparison data from two years ago, or the two years prior to this year? I'm just curious, when, is there a typical time that school districts send out this survey to their staff? Time of year?
Well, I would say typical, yes. I guess what you kind of see is kind of humps as the school year goes on. So the type of year that we're in right now is basically nothing, June, July, and August. As we do see greater increases of survey frequency would probably be, you know, maybe late September, early October, after the kids have found the buses in the bathrooms and kind of the, the early part of the year. I would say that we kind of see some interest right around the end or the first semester slash beginning of the second semester, it's kind of a mid-year check-in. That leaves enough time usually to, you know, make any changes that might be needed, or, or was any glaring issues that could be fixed in the remaining months of the school year. And then I would say our other most commonly busy time is right around when you did your survey, actually, in April. So we're, we're getting a lot of these type of presentations, just as I did for you in, in these kind of weeks. Because people do their survey in April, they'll put the data, analyze it a little bit themselves, get their report, and then schedule us around this time. So I guess the, the long answer to your question is maybe September, October, January-ish, and then right around April, mid-spring.
Thank you. Did you have another question?
Sorry, Rob, it's Mark here. What happened with the packet that, what you were pushing out this year that we committed to of the surveys?
Say, say more.
Okay. Laurie, do you remember what that was? That was?
Yeah, it's the school perception survey packet. I believe we have a list of the surveys open to us, and I think we need to choose which ones.
Oh! Yeah, 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 sorry. I thought there was something I forgot to send you in terms of data. I was like, oh, God. No, yes, that's called the key measurement system. Yeah, I think I was bugging Mark about that back in, in May or so. Yeah, that's something we're just in the middle of rolling out. Yeah, it's twenty, it's a suite of twenty-two surveys that is a subscription each year. And then districts can decide if they want to save a little money and administrate the surveys on their own, or if they'd like us to do exactly what, what I did for you here tonight, and administrate it and provide reports and so on. So, yeah, we're adding a little bit more every couple of weeks or so. And in fact, we just did do a new superintendent survey that's coming out in July, so.
So, Rob, we could use that, those surveys on our own at key points during the year and then still do this one at the end.
Yeah, so you can use any of the surveys you want in there, and any, you know, you can ignore all twenty-two, use twenty-two, whatever you'd like. So if you wanted to kind of keep this one separate and kind of do it the way you're doing, you can sort of do that and then say, you know, maybe you want to do like a middle school entrance survey in September or October, and then you could decide to do that. And typically, like, for student surveys, that's something that districts tend to administrate on their own. The, the students are all there, they all have safety email addresses and so on. But yeah, you're free to pick and choose whatever you'd like out of that menu.
Rob?
Mm-hmm.
While you compare with the two years prior, have there been any anecdotal trends that you're seeing while you're going over the data? Or that you're presenting any consistency in kind of what you're seeing or in that?
Yeah, there's a dip. What I would say is that the, I should say that the dip isn't this school year, which I think will probably not come as a shock to anybody. That being said, the dip isn't always in the same area for different districts. Sometimes it might be communication, sometimes it might be engage, you know, the, the, the different, I shouldn't say, like, the different categories that I have here, whether it's building leadership, compensation, and benefits, you know, those, those different categories might vary a little bit. But I would say overall, we've seen a dip in, in terms of people that have done a staff survey this year. Which is actually one of the reasons why I think it's kind of, it's a bit like we had the question like, well, you know, if, if this year is so abnormal, you know, then what's the benefit maybe of producing comparisons of the last two years? And really, I say, when I do data analysis myself, I find it most valuable to ask the data questions. And if I say, you know, this year is abnormal, by providing comparison data, I can say, well, how abnormal? You know, what is it as compared to a, a, a peer sample of districts over the last couple of years? So that's why I value that camp comparison district from that, most comparison data from that perspective. But yeah, I mean, to answer your question again, long answer to a short question was, yeah, there's a dip overall for, regardless of staff, parent, student surveys, especially over the course of this year, regardless of when we've done it, February, October, May.
Thank you.
I don't know if I commented this on the weekend update, but three years ago, our survey was here. Last year was up here, and this year is right in between. And again, my opinion, and I compared all three years' data, that it just seemed overall, by the comments and by the numbers, just everything across the board just took a step down.
Considering what we've been through this year, the fact that we're in between the two, I am going to take a positive.
The other thing I would say, too, is that I think this year in particular is really helpful. I think it's really important to collect data, see where your successes are, see where your challenges remain. People can and should be heard, but at the same time, I think as you move forward with more longitudinal data, the footnote around this data will become bigger and bigger.
So if we think of any questions later, can we call you?
Absolutely.
Email you?
Yes, I'll be above.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, of course. Any other thing before I pop off?
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Of course, anytime. And Mark, we could be in touch to you about the KMS. I can re, re, reconnect with you if that helps.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Bye. Did you have a comment?
I just, I guess I'm just, you know, it seems like the last two years, communication with the board is always one that's low. I know that one, it's been low ever, every year. I don't know what way we do that, what way we grow that one or improve that one. I talked to, not from here, but other teachers that said on other districts, they've sometimes had departments come into school or meetings and present. I don't know if that's what teachers would want to do, so that they actually present what they're doing in their department to the, to the board. And I wouldn't want to put more work on anybody, so if it's something, no. But at least they could come in as a English or math department and present to us, hey, we're enrolling this new curriculum, or employing this new curriculum this year, or this is what's happening in our English or math or sciences department instead of just a, I don't know, and maybe throw it out, and if they say, ah, I don't really feel like I'm one of the school we're meeting, or, don't worry about it. But that, that way, I mean, they could maybe be in front of the school board and we could talk to them, they could ask us questions, or we could ask them maybe something, you know, once a year that they come in, I don't know, I'm just trying to, how do we, without reaching right out to the staff, get a better communication without asking them to actually come in themselves?
Well, that was part of what Employee Council was set up to do. And when we started it, I thought it was going pretty well. We had a lot of involvement. And it might be part of the circumstances with COVID this year that it hasn't been as productive. However, we did talk about this last year, the communication, and I believe it was Catherine Cranston who said, we communicate through our agendas in our minutes. And it was at that time, I believe, that we asked Tasha to start not only posting the agendas in minutes, but actually emailing them out. And Bruce, you've said that when you clicked on the agenda, you can see all the staff members who are on it, so.
Yeah, no, and I think they're looking at them, but I mean, again, would people consider that communication, you know, from the board? I mean, yes, that's how we're supposed to communicate.
Well, we've sent out thank yous this year, and I don't, you know, a couple of times. I don't think they want us, you know. I'd be interested in hearing their ideas.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's it to the, the end of the year.
And with COVID, it's limited, the outside access to the building so much, it's made it more difficult.
Yeah, maybe it's something that they, they present to us.
Remember last year, we talked about possibly opening up our board meetings a half hour early for people to come in with concerns or questions or a face-to-face with the board? Do we want to reconsider that again?
That was a suggestion we had, and it was pre-COVID. We were talking about having listening sessions where you'd have maybe two board members at one meeting that would come a half hour early, or forty-five minutes. If people wanted to talk to the board members, but they didn't want to talk at public comment and that. So I, I think we talked very favorable about that, but again, COVID happened, and it kind of went by the wayside. But I've used that in other districts, and it's been, it's very successful.
I also remember the Catherine wanting to have a thing, a bridge session or a mediation session or something. She wanted to have something for the board and the admin to go to. And she, am I correct on that?
Yes, you're right.
Catherine wanted to have something.
She was willing to facilitate it.
Yeah, and I think maybe we should revisit that.
I, I agree, and I thought it was a great idea, and she's trained in that, and I think it would be great to bring her in to do that.
Yeah.
Mark, or Cherie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I didn't know how they communicated before and now. But certainly, they need to know what's going on and everything, and if they have comments somehow, some way, we can give us their comments for questions.
I like the mediation idea.
Okay, let's, if there's nothing else on that item, we can go on.
Could, could you guys help us out, too, if you hear something? That would be helpful, and let us know.
We could talk at the end of the year.
I'm sure you do, if you hear something specific. Thanks.
The calendar proposed amendment, Trish.
Well, that, hi. You received my memo. We have one professional development day approximately each month that are highly valued. They are placed in a, in spots where we can do not only work around the strategic plan, but also give teachers time to finalize grades, do those kinds of things, and support educator effectiveness. That is one thing that came out from that survey, from DPI, saying, schools, you need to pay attention to this. You know, we're asking big stuff out of our teachers, and we want to make sure they have time for goal development and so on. There's been renewed interest in EdCamp, but slightly modified. EdCamp is something we've done for several years. We've been the host because we're centrally located among, you know, from Ellsworth all the way up to St. Croix Falls. There are schools that come, and we believe that it's invaluable for teachers to talk to their peers. And many, many good things have come out of EdCamp. We've made adjustments every year based on feedback from staff. This year, this past year with COVID, everything kind of went crazy. It's kind of put on the back burner. Past calendar, we had a Friday, Monday setup in October, kind of like a mini MEA weekend, like if you were a Minnesota person. The Friday would have been EdCamp, the Monday would be reflection, because you learn a lot on that day, plus time to develop their SLOs, which are their, their goals connected to TEE, and their PPGs, which is their professional goal. It's a perfect time of year. So we just recently were notified, or we started dialogue again among the directors, as they've been doing their surveys, that EdCamp was one of the most favorable and most valuable times across some other districts. Can we do it? And as we started talking, we thought, well, what, what do we need as we're restarting this next school year? I mean, it's just not a, like, let's do EdCamp, you know, like, woo-hoo. We've got a lot of different things we're considering now, re-entering, restarting after COVID and what that looks like, and where our kids are in SEL, or social emotional learning. Galen, a lot of the districts around here, because we had Galen's presentation online for a short period of time, watched it, and were quite impressed and wanted to be part of the whole belonging movement. On top of that, they're using a gentleman from River Falls, Todd Savage, who's helping some districts around here with LGBTQ. So as we look to diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging, thought, well, let's do an EdCamp around those topics, because everyone has got their own challenges and struggles, and educating our staff and supporting our staff with information, and kind of creating that we're on this together, you know, we're belonging, they're belonging. To do that, though, everyone has already lined their calendars. The school districts that are highly interested, others are working toward it on that Friday, perfect, that's been typical. Now we would like to ask that we amend our calendar and add Monday as a professional development day, like we had this last twenty twenty-one school year, for that same reason, reflection, team time, and development of the SLO and PPG on Monday, following a day of learning as a community on Friday.
Do you know right now how many other schools are able to attend or interested in attending?
We have at least three districts that are highly, that already have it on their calendar, ready to go. We have other districts that are looking to send small groups that are, it really would impact, or looking to see if they can adjust a calendar, because at this point, all district calendars are done for twenty twenty-one. Even if we kept it at three districts, that would be fabulous, especially given the topic and the kind of intimate conversations we want. One of the issues we have with EdCamp is that one session at the elementary was on men supporting mental health. I was at the elementary for that day. We had to have an overflow room, one room, an overflow room, if people were on top of people. And it's really hard to get a voice or have that kind of colloquial, you know, dialogue, that professional dialogue when you've got forty people trying to cram into a room. So keeping it smaller would be our hope if we're going to try to do something that is of this caliber, of this theme. And bringing Galen back, bringing Todd back, so we have some keynote speakers who then can help guide the process.
Did anybody have any other questions or comments for Trish on this slide?
It's just really cutting it close for snow days on the calendar, though, for.
We aren't worried about that for multiple reasons. One, Dr. Bezek never calls a snow day.
That's true.
We all talk about that.
And doesn't want to call.
That is true. The other reason is that it gives us about a day and a half of time. We like the idea of having like that impromptu snow day for our kids to kind of have the joy of childhood. But if need be, we could change any one of our PD days into an asynchronous learning day or a snow day.
Well, that's true. I didn't think about that, yeah.
For month-to-month, and we're used to doing things from virtual now. So we are set up to do that, if indeed that's something that we would need or want to do.
And we're really set up with hours like K-six, because the law has written K-six, seven, twelve. And so all of our seven through twelve graders do a device, so we, we could do an asynchronous day if needed. But we are well over minutes and hours of instruction, K-six.
Okay.
No worries there.
Yeah, I, yeah, I did notice that they have a lot more.
Did anybody else have a question or a comment? All right, this item will come back then to the regular session in June.
Thank you.
You are welcome. And then Trent, would you like to present on the extracurricular core of content?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. This is an annual thing that gets brought forward to the board to be reviewed and then ultimately approved heading into the following school year. So I know that our current school year is still technically in session, but in an effort to have this come forth as a first reading and then hopefully approved at the June regular session, this would put us on schedule to be in place for when fall athletic and activity registrations opens up in July. We open that, we try to have that open on July first to give people plenty of time to be registered for their fall sports. So my memo to the board and on the agenda outlines any, what I consider, changes to the, or updates to our code. The first one is underneath academic eligibility, which is really on page two and three of the code. Just updates the specific dates for our high school midterm checking grades, semester grade posting, to make them relevant for next school year, and also our middle school grade check dates to reflect the following year as well for next year. On page six, under violation consequences, adding verbiage related to outline our procedure for addressing a student who has been involved in three or four code violations during their high school career. We currently have language that addresses that if it's an AODA type of violation. But we run into, schools run into situations where it's not necessarily an AODA violation, it's a different violation. So we just wanted to have some verbiage to help guide us if we are ever in that situation. So we just wanted to have some verbiage to help guide us if we are ever in that situation. And then finally, on page eight, updating our verbiage regarding dual-sport athletes to reflect our current trends from what we've seen.
I was curious about that one. Because the old language said as long as they had both coaches' approval, it was all right, but it looks like in your, what you're bringing forward for next year, it's unknown.
We would just, yeah, to strike it, we haven't actually had anything come forward in several years from my understanding, and from previous experience and just kind of digging around on that, it's very hard to actually come to a good mutual agreement that isn't going to negatively affect one of the two teams involved.
The time I remember it was when we had a boys soccer player that they wanted to use for the kicker for the football game. Did anybody else have any questions on this one?
I do. Sorry, Trent, but I remember when we, you know, there was a lot of work that went into this originally. And I remember there was a lot of discussion about, you know, subsequent offenses and how you want to encourage kids to get a first start, stuff like that. So under your new language, you know, it says they will be, will forfeit their participation in all co-curricular activities for the remainder of their enrollment in this school district? That's for the final one. Now, I totally appreciate your outlines, but is that the language you really want? You don't want to give yourself any kind of wiggle room of may or versus will?
We could certainly potentially do that. I think the greater question would be is if a person has had four code violations, they've had several, several opportunities over the course of their high school career.
Right. And really, all I'm saying is if they have those code violations in the eighth grade, you know, and then they're senior. So I think that was the consideration. I just wanted to know to make sure that you didn't want that flexibility.
I don't think we are asking you for an answer right now, so if you'd like to think about it.
Yeah. I'm good if that's what you suggest. I'm not saying I'm not. I'm just saying I remember a lot of discussions.
But if this is, whatever you recommend, you know, bring forward what you want, your recommendation. Does anybody else have any questions or comments about the extracurricular? All right, then this item will also come back for the next meeting. Mark, staffing.
Yeah, so we're trying to make that transition from, you know, where we were pre-COVID, where we were during COVID, and now returning, you know, to the post-COVID staffing. And with healthcare aide, the year before, we had one healthcare aide and we had a district nurse trying to cover two buildings. That was tough. We went into COVID with a healthcare aide in each building, plus Ryan, which, you know, I can't say enough about Ryan's contributions this year, and thank God he had that help in the buildings. We did lose one of the aides during the year to resignation, but we want to go into this next year with two healthcare aides and Ryan in one of the buildings. And I think we're going to have them in the high school where it's the least busy, and we'll have the two aides in the middle school and the elementary, which are high-demand buildings there. And again, we can react to that during, as the year goes, you know, who knows? We didn't predict COVID, so who knows what the next adventure will be. But, so we're looking at maintaining one of those, excuse me, two of those three aides. I think only one of them was, the two were put on one-year contracts. One resigned, so we have one that's, again, has to be renewed if we're going to keep a person in each building. Hope that was clear.
And I believe that's the one who's now in Pam's building. Do we know, she started earlier at the high school and now is at the elementary. Do we know if she's interested in continuing?
Is that Cody?
Hey.
I have not had that conversation. I don't know if Jody has.
Abby would be a better person to ask.
Yeah. I haven't heard she hasn't been, so, and I can find out for the next meeting. District-wide substitute, you've received some communication from staff, you know, people really love that this year, and we needed it this year, but this is one of those expenses that, you know, the nice thing about having these people is you have good, solid people under contract that you know are going to be in your building. Cost-effective, it's, it's not cost-effective, but again, you have to weigh that out. In this last year, they were worth gold. We'd like to return just the one that we've had in the past, and then if we need to, we can always adjust to that over the next, you know, fall or what have you. So we're looking, again, we're trying to, you know, we had an expenditure of over eight hundred thousand dollars in COVID expenditure, and this was part of that. We have to start paring that down again, getting back to where we were in the past.
But we used to have troubles getting subs.
Well, this year was a disaster for subs, because your average sub was at that critical age, you know, for COVID, and so a lot of our subs weren't working. And so we had to, principals had to get very creative on how they covered classes this year.
So we had three subs this year, right?
Correct.
Three long-term subs?
Yeah, full-time.
Yeah. And so I think we used to have one.
Correct.
And that's when we were having trouble finding subs by calling around to everybody and their mother. So I'd get the whole budget thing, but to go from three to one, when we were having trouble finding them, I don't know. Two would make more sense.
Well, we don't know what next year is going to bring, and I would hate to commit to two full-time people at this point in time when, again, these people may be chomping at getting out themselves and stuff again. Don't know.
Well, that's true.
You know, so it's just, we don't need to commit to it right now.
Yeah.
I mean, we found these people, and they were good people. There's people around. But again, I would just hate to commit those resources right now when we can take some time to see what happens. And again, I know.
I just don't want to forget that as an option.
Yeah. No, 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 not at all. And then the last piece there was the twenty-five position at high school. We put it on just for a one-year contract, Nits Renee's position, and we'd like to do that again.
And you definitely need the assistance of the IMC. There's no way one person can do that. Did anybody else have any questions or concerns about any of these three items? All right, then hearing none, this item will come back to the regular session as well. The employee handbook is next. And Tia, you're listed for this?
Yeah.
Would you like to speak to it?
Sure. So this is the final draft. So there's still going to be some edits made. This is all of it put together from what has been approved over the last several months. A few things to note in there, there are some additions that have been made and are shown as highlights. As we were going through and as sections were being approved, we would realize that something should have been included in a prior section that wasn't. Nothing changes what is actually the practice, it's just added for clarification purposes. So, but we did feel it was important to add, so that's why you'll see some of those additional things there. And then the kind of final big key step we have to go through yet is, as sections are referenced in the language, we have to go back now that the formatting has changed and some of the number, and we have to go back and verify those things. So if you are going through it and referencing and you're finding that that's not right, know that we will be working through that before the June regular session to hopefully have the final, final draft for you to approve with a July one start date. Also knowing that we can always go back and make amendments as needed at any point throughout the year.
And I've been going through it as well. They printed out a copy for me and I've been going, and I found some little errors, but I haven't gotten through the whole thing already. It might, you know, if you do want to go through every single line and paragraph and you find an error or a typo or a numbering error, and you'd like to let us know, it doesn't hurt to have more eyes on it.
Yeah, except at this point, I think Jody and I both feel a little bit like.
You can't see it anymore.
Yeah, because we're so interested, so, yes, we would appreciate outside eyes if you could.
I was going to offer, but it's ninety-three pages.
Did anybody have any questions or concerns about the employee handbook?
I saw a comment in the school perception survey that, that staff would like to see it done, so, good timing.
Our goal is to have it done the end of June.
Yeah, good job on it, Tia.
We've been working on it all year.
Jody and all.
All right, if we are done with this item, then the next one is the policy review. We have thirty-four forty and forty-four forty and eighty-four fifty. Would anybody? Bruce, I believe you asked for these, would you like to talk about now?
Sure. I guess thirty-four, forty, and forty-four forty go first. Dave still here, that seems to be the kicker, and I know we talked maybe a little about him last time, but I guess my sticking point, like we all knew, was kind of the, I gotta find the line in there. The purchase of meals and/or food is reimbursable only when an overnight stay is required for official school district business. And I don't know, maybe Dave can help, what language would help so that, you know, if we're gone, if teachers are gone from the district, or staff are gone from the district, you know, for a half day or longer, I don't, required official school district business, they can be reimbursed. I know it's a minor thing, but, you know, if we're requiring them or if they're going to, then we don't have to make an exception every time it comes up throughout the year, and maybe it will be minor on the times, but that's just my thought, you know, if they're taking a district vehicle too, you know, to these events, these trainings, I guess. So, I don't know. We gotta go grab Dave or watch him.
Do you want to add something like if they're, if they are at a location for personal, for professional development and, you know, something like, that wouldn't be overnight, but they're just somewhere for the day at professional development and a meal, we would, and a meal is acceptable when they are basically off-site, but it doesn't matter that they're, if it's overnight or not.
Right. And I guess that's, the thing for me is just the overnight stay, that the only way we're going to let people get reimbursed for things is if they stay overnight, and I don't think that's right, that we're expecting people to, I think we'd rather have them stay closer and still get something instead of just trying to do it overnight. And then two, how does it, you know, then it's, I know it's minor, maybe tiki-tack, but it's, that's just my thought on, yeah, professional development outside the district can be reimbursed for meals and/or food.
What would your limits be? Typically, you'd limit nine dollars for breakfast, ten dollars for lunch, eleven dollars for dinner, or something like that?
I think it's part, it's stated in there, the United States General Service Administration. So it'd still be that same rate? Huh?
Said except the lock-in, because it's always more money with the lock-in.
Yeah. But yeah, I think it's just, yeah, they're still following that chart, I guess. So whatever that is. You know, and if, if too, if we're looking at a survey and our survey results, and this is just cooking out, that say that people don't feel are compensated correctly, and now we're asking them to buy lunch, and they really don't feel they're compensated correctly, just another, maybe a little perk.
I think that's a pretty common practice, when you're gone for the whole day and you have to have lunch, it's either provided by the people that are doing seminars or it's paid.
Right.
So on, on policy number thirty-four forty, on the two, three, fourth paragraph, the first, like something to the effect of the purchase of meals and/or food is reimbursable takeout only, and say when an overnight stay is required and/or the staff member is off-site for an official school district, for official school district business, something like that?
That puts us back to where we tried to address the problem in the beginning. And I think Mark had indicated that Dave said things were working fine, so I'm not sure that it's necessarily.
Well, it's kind of the, Dave, Dave is the go-to person, and you know, if we have any questions, Dave is the one who basically said, if it's allowable, that's not allowable and whatever. So from that respect, it's working, but what effect that's having.
And Dave is the one who came up with the language to make it clear. It's been in effect this entire school year, and we've had one case where the board felt we should make an exception, and we did so. So as long as we're clear that if there's a reason to make an exception, the board is willing to hear that, I don't see a reason to change the policy as it's written.
So every time there's an off-site meal option for professional development or conference or training, that has to come before the board for approval?
It's happened once this year.
This is also a COVID year where nothing is happening anywhere. So I think this is a not typical year, you know.
They're really.
Usually you would go to Caesar, you'd go to somewhere for training, and this time it's been all virtually.
And they'd have lunch there, you know.
It's part of the, part of the, part of the training.
And hopefully, I mean, hopefully they do, that's what we're signing up for. I'm just trying to give us the.
Okay, well, is Dave coming in or?
Not sure.
He's not here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this is, I believe, the third time that we've had this policy come back. I would rather not bring it back to the regular session. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Well, if they want to bring it back again, I don't, I don't mind, but I'd like specific language. But I just, you know, I think it's working, and I don't think it's a bad thing to say. These are the parameters.
We'll know more this next year when conferences fire up again, more travel. I mean, this year was not a good year to gauge anything related to this policy, really. I'm usually at meetings and what have you, but this year, we haven't gone anywhere. So I'd be hesitant to change it right now until we know what we're experiencing, because some of our meetings are going to stay virtual. We know, there's some of these things we found that, you know, we don't have to run here or here.
It's much more time efficient.
Pardon?
It's much more time efficient. I've done all the CISA board meetings this entire year remotely, and it saved me driving back and forth to Turtle Lake, which I very much appreciate. So I hope that option continues for the things that it works for.
So what I would, what I would think is if we're not going to change the language and the policy, or we're going to leave it as is, I would encourage you guys, if you're going to go to seminars or training or conferences or whatever, I mean, bring it to us so that we can, you know, if you're going to a training and it's going to cost you thirty dollars for three people to have lunch or something, I feel like it's something we want to look at and approve so that we can do it. approve so that we can do it, because it sounds like you can't unless you bring it to us. So I'm hoping that you would do that, so that, I don't know, does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? So that, because chances are you're going to a training and our other school district has provided that meal for their employees, and, so I would encourage you to bring it forth.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, it's just with the staff and people that are going to sign up for the training, and say, it is over four hours, it's not overnight, but board will probably approve it, obviously, professional development, we hope. And we'll see, I guess, how many times it comes up, and then we can address it maybe a year.
If something you're doing every month, then you might wanna change the policy.
Later. We can wait six months, Katie, I'll try. Try to wait six months before bringing up.
I'm writing that down.
On video. Check the video.
Give us a little raised period to see how this works, so.
I think Dave knows, and so he would approve, you know.
Okay, so we don't want to bring it back, then.
All right, and then 8450?
Yeah, so then we can go to 8450. So, I guess, just looking at 8450, and I guess my thought, and I know how it's perceived, but, so we added COVID-19 coronavirus to this policy in paragraph two, in the September works, or the September session, I think is what it was. So with that, it states that we shall, purposes of this policy, casual conduct, communicable disease, shall include all the followings. And then again, in the next paragraph, the board shall follow all state statutes, health department regulations, and/or St. Craig County Public Health Department recommendations. So I know, my thought was that we take out the coronavirus from that category, that paragraph two, coronavirus, COVID-19, and we make a note, its own category, its own paragraph, as in, in order to protect the health and safety of all students, district personnel, and community at large, the board will, or the board recommends following all state statutes, basically everything from the rest of that paragraph, but instead of shall follow, is recommends, the board recommends following.
May would be the word.
May would be may, okay.
Yep, may needs.
Sorry. I guess because from the, the St. Craig County, it, it states as a recommendation from the St. Craig County. So as a district to maybe ease legal or follow it, it's, it is still the board's, well, I don't know, may, see, I don't, I don't know if I want may, because maybe that's the way to do it.
And the least may makes it an option, shall makes it, you have to follow, that's why may, if you're using the least, is the option in there.
So saying may, I wouldn't want to have to have another vote on this specific topic. Follow me, like, like, so if it was may, I just wanted to be clear, would that make it an optional, that we, we could or could not follow that recommendation, but it would be up to the board then to?
So that would change it to follow the recommendations of this, the county health, public health, all of those people? Yes, but specific to masking, that's the other policy. We have a face mask PPE policy, so that's the one specifically that could be changed, where this one, you're saying, and I get what you're saying, but if you're saying that we'll say may, the, and changing it from shall, it's essentially taking, putting the onus of all of the stuff on the board, rather than putting it on the experts who advise us.
So, so I hear may, and maybe I'm just not, not listening, but I still think it's the board recommends.
That's.
Instead of putting may, because I'm saying it recommends, as in, we recommend you do what the county's saying, but we're not saying you have to follow it, we're not saying any of that stuff, we're saying you, you recommend. Now, that can mean whatever people want it to mean, that's just leaving us for the COVID-19, this is just for COVID, this isn't for the rest of this stuff, this is just for the COVID, so we go to the county page, and, okay, we recommend that you do what the county page says, the board, the school district recommends that, but we don't, we aren't in...
We're not enforcing?
We're not enforcing that you have to do exactly what it says, because again, especially now that the language states it's a recommendation, and it's not coming through a state thing, it's just a county recommendation. So we too are recommending doing what the county is stating, but we're not saying you have to.
I catch what you're throwing, like the sports, the baseball.
Yeah.
But how can we not consider coronavirus a casual contact communicable disease? How, that's the thing, you know, like, how would, how would we be able to say, oh, except this one, which isn't casual contact, which is casual contact, but it's not in a, in a policy?
I would, I'm not trying to get into the, the story.
No, I'm not, I'm not debating that, I'm asking.
I just, I just, I look at coronavirus or COVID-19, as, and we put this in in September when things were a lot different, and a lot less was known about it, and I'm not saying it's not communicable, because it is, but it's also a pandemic situation that hasn't, that, I don't know, it's, it's also been around, this one's been around for what, a year and a half, and we're plumbing into a, I, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not a science expert here, I'm just, I'm just trying to listen and support people and trying to make some type of, hey, for this one, and I, I hear what you're saying, well, how can you take one communicable disease and pull it away from the others? And I guess I can do that as in, the county is making recommendations, so us as a board are also making recommendations, and not, not a strict, for, hey, to go to school, you have to have this, you know, this vaccination or, or this.
You haven't done that.
Oh, okay. I don't know.
I, I totally get what you're saying, but diphtheria, scarlet fever, other strep infections, whooping cough, mumps, measles, rubella, they all started as pandemics that then ended up getting, you know, with all the stuff happening. So they all were at one time at this level. So that's why if we use that part of it, it makes it difficult to separate from that section there, the casual contact communicable diseases, like you said. I guess I understand more when you change, you know, the shall to may, or recommendations, but to take it out of there, I don't, I don't know how we could do that. Do you get where I'm getting hung up a little bit?
No, I, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I know.
So, Bruce.
Yes, Katie.
You know, I don't know if this is particular to this topic too, so, but, so in my head, I think, I think as long as students have had an opportunity, and so, so much of a period of time has passed since a vaccine has been available to them, you know, I can see making a change to the policy. So you have 11th and 12th graders who've been eligible for quite a while, you have 9th and 10th graders at the high school building, who have now probably had about three to four weeks. So in my head, I think it makes sense then to say, okay, board, why don't you at least just set a policy of some sort that says, okay, if in X amount of weeks, and I don't know what the reasonable timeframe is, five or six weeks after it's been, been made available to all of the students in one building, then you can say, okay, that building, because everybody's had an opportunity, everybody who wants one has had an opportunity to get vaccinated, can and has had that ability. And you can say to that building, okay, you're good, you know, I mean, it's going to take a little bit of time, but I, in my head, I think that that is the reasonable thing to do, because I don't think we should, I think it needs to happen when we can't, we can't force people to be vaccinated, right? And we don't want to say, show us your papers, and so this is a way of, of...
Compromise.
Getting, yes, and getting there, in what I think is perfectly reasonable, and that would include the staff members in the building.
That's the same, so that staff and...
Oh, yeah, totally.
Everyone from that.
But of course, if a staff went from one building to the other building, and there were kids in that building not yet eligible, like from the high school to the middle school...
Then they would wear a mask at the middle school?
Yeah, but it wouldn't, and it wouldn't affect anybody in the district darkness unless you have kids come in.
So I guess maybe this is...
Then I would expect you to put on masks.
Would it be more, I mean, would that exceptional, would that be more relevant on the 845, 8450.01, the PPE, and then have something that, rather than on the 8450?
This is where I was, yes, I think so.
I totally agree with that.
Does that make sense to you?
8450.01 is the PPE pandemic.
You know, to get there, but I think, Mark?
Yes?
When we, when we got this, got the...
I was just saying, I think, I mean, I think you have to give parents enough time to get their kids vaccinated, if they want them vaccinated, and that would, I would think a reasonable time might be five weeks, I don't know, I don't know how quickly they can get in.
They can get in pretty fast.
So the 12-year-olds, right, that were just approved on, I think it was May 12.
My son got his second dose on Thursday.
So that would be Tuesday.
Uh, the second day.
So that, okay, so that's probably, so that's why I think, like, five or six weeks. I mean, it's not available to the elementary school kids yet, I get that, and I get all of it, but I think we really need to give them, those who wanted a chance, otherwise we do have remediation methods that have been used throughout all the schools, all year, until that point happens.
So you're...
I don't know how Marge is feeling.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
I'm just thinking, a lot of that can apply to this, this fall, too, when we're trying to make decisions, but by then, they will have had chances to get vaccinated, not, I don't know about the little kids, you know, when they're in stock, vaccinating them, but anybody from 12 up right now can be vaccinated.
The only problem is the middle school, and, and just like the high school was divided too.
That's an F of 6, third, depending on birthdays, don't have access right now, so.
Yeah.
And then the incoming kiddos won the fall.
Yeah.
As of today.
Sorry.
So Marge, from a health standpoint, do you, what are your thoughts on this proposed idea?
Why, I think that keeping the COVID in with the other, it's a communicable disease, so they're all communicable diseases. And you do have to show vaccination papers for measles, coughs, rubella, diphtheria, all that, when you go into school. So I don't think it's outrageous to have somebody show the vaccine papers for COVID.
That's actually incorrect, the, you do not have to show proof of vaccine to be in school.
I fill out forms all the time for them.
You're, you're asked to, but, you know, the, the equity piece, right? So if there are students that are coming from some, somewhere else, that, a, a different country, that they do not vaccinate, they are not told that they can't be in school, is that correct?
They have to sign paperwork.
They, they have, they can sign a waiver, but it's not a prerequisite to be in school.
But they do have to either prove that they've been vaccinated, or they have to sign a waiver.
Right.
So the question is asked.
Right, but it's not a prerequisite?
They have to know one way or the other.
Yeah.
If they're vaccinated or not, it's just, you know, look what happened out in California when people weren't vaccinating their kids against measles, they had that huge outbreak in the last couple of years, and, but you, you have to know what you're dealing with, is this, you know, if we have somebody come to school that has measles, and we know that these kids are not vaccinated, you've gotta watch, you know, you've gotta quarantine and stuff, you have, they do know one way or the other when they come to school, if they've been vaccinated or not, because they either have their paperwork, or they sign a waiver.
So the tricky part in that is also that, you know, they're not requiring vaccines, you know, on, on the state level. So we can't require it in schools. So the only way to, that's why I was making that suggestion.
Yeah.
Is just because that way it does give...
Yeah, I don't have anything...
Protection to those kids who want it.
Anything against the may or the whatever, but I just think, just leave all the cor, all the contagious things together. Yeah, the protocols would be easier to do that, and then look at the PPE one.
Oh, leave this as it is, but look at the PPE.
For, yeah.
And it's, policy 5320, which is our immunization policy, it says that the board requires all students to be properly immunized pursuant to the regulations of Wisconsin DHS, but then it says waivers, and it's by the 25th day of school, la da 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 da, and then it says waivers of the immunization requirements shall be granted only for medical, religious, and personal medical conditions. So you have to have one or the other.
Yeah.
You'd have to show your immunization records or your waiver.
Yeah.
Both are pieces of paper, but with that all said, if we were to do, I mean, is that something that would, policy committee, if you're Trevor, that if we were to do something that said 30, 45 days from the time that the vaccination was eligible to the age group, masks could be optional, because there might be people who still want to wear them.
Oh, absolutely.
And the people who don't want to wear them, that don't have vaccinated, I mean, it wouldn't matter at that point, masks would be optional 45 days prior, or after the vaccinations would be eligible to the age groups that are eligible to.
Forty-five days or so?
Well, I would like to get an expert's opinion on what the timeframe is, because in my head, I'm thinking more like eight weeks, so, because it's, I think it's...
First shot, and then second shot is two weeks later, and then it's two weeks after that second shot.
Are all the shots, no, I thought it was three or four weeks after.
I think it's two weeks.
It's two weeks after the second shot.
For both five, no, I mean, between the first and the second.
Oh, one's two weeks, one's three weeks.
I thought one was four weeks, is three weeks the...
Well, one of them is just one shot, one time.
Right.
Yeah.
And then...
And then you get the second shot, and it's two weeks.
Mine was two weeks.
All of us were two weeks.
Yeah.
Some were doing three weeks due to the...
Mine was three.
But it's, a lot of them were doing three weeks based on scheduling and the amount, especially if you're one of the earlier people, and mine was three because they couldn't get it enough.
They can't get it in fast enough.
Yeah, because that was in January, so mine was three weeks.
And now there's plenty of vaccine.
Everything.
So regardless, I just want to know what the requirement is, so that we give a little bit of leeway at the beginning, so parents can give, get appointments?
Yeah.
And we make sure that we're doing the two weeks after?
Yeah.
So whatever the experts tell us would be appropriate?
Bruce?
Mark? Thank you. Just, just a, a comment, policy-wise, oh, you know, I never liked shall in a policy, because it cuts off your options, but when we put this in here, in our best belief at the time to keep these doors open, we needed this policy to say shall.
Yeah, totally.
Okay, the, the problem with shall, again, you lose, you know, the, the way it's set up, you really lose control over it, because our policy says we're gonna follow CDC, DHS, and St. Craig County Health. Now, St. Craig County Health just today extended their mandate, their mask mandate till August 20...
August 5th.
August 5th?
Yeah.
So that would be the reason for the may?
Right, because then you can make a decision of, you know, what, what you want to do. My, my fear is, I just, regardless of where we're headed in May, I, or in August, I believe they're gonna keep recommending, and you're gonna lose control of that piece if you don't change it to may.
And so that's why you want to remove it from this and have a separate one? Because I don't think we should say you may follow MMRs.
Well, I think it'd be, one, two, three, it'd be the...
Oh, we'd have to be crafting out, but just so you have control.
I think it'd be paragraph three, the board may follow all state statutes, right?
And it's not a mandate, it's, they, they are calling it a mask advisory.
And we're talking about the, as it would in... And we're talking about the, as it would include the measles, mumps, rubella.
Yeah, so
I mean, that's a shall.
So you keep it, I mean, that's, so that's shall within
So, yeah.
The next paragraph would be the may follow.
So maybe Trevor could work something on that.
So can I ask you this, that, okay, if your intent is to try to regain control of the situation, I can have Trevor look at, how, how can we word this that it puts back in your laps?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be awesome.
Nope, nope.
Yeah.
And is that the point oh one policy too?
Well, I think so.
Well, I'd look at both of them, okay.
But I'm, I don't know if it has, because if we, um, I'm assuming that we could have the draft, two draft, those two draft policies by our regular session.
I think so.
Yeah.
Oh, come on.
I want to make sure everybody's or a majority are on board.
Yeah, and I know we didn't look at oh one tonight, but I, personally, I wouldn't have any problem if Trevor is able to draft something of, we bring it up to the regular session to discuss, because it's not like it hasn't been far out of the realm of review. You know, I know we bring it here and then go there, but, I mean
Yeah.
It should recognize advances that are being made.
Yes.
So vaccinations, we totally put it in there, so it's something.
Can I just recap, so I do appreciate Katie's thought about let's, um, you know, give these certain age groups opportunities to get the vaccine or not. But so just make sure I understand. And I'm following Bruce in that, and I really like the idea of, hey, Trevor, here's these two policies. We've, it's, yes, it's a pandemic, but there have been new developments. And we're seeing other areas open, our own village is open and, um, and what I would want to say to Trevor is, hey, Trevor, eighty-four percent of staff agree that they want to go mask optional. We have a huge amount of parents that are, um, asking us to go mask optional. You know, I look at that, all the emails from the teachers that are heartbreaking. I, um, we all received the email from one of our counselors about the ramifications of masks and, um, kids that, uh, need summer school to graduate but don't want to attend because of masks. So I'm saying all this, cause I'm wondering, hey, Trevor, this is what, this is the information we have now. How can we draft these policies to, you know, reduce our liability or however we word that? And I don't know that, are we really going to wait until August and all of the opportunities for people to get, um, vaccinated? And, I mean, I am going to bring up other districts, because we've relied on other districts' information up until now. And I don't know what makes us different, that we're gonna just not ease our restrictions. And we're gonna, we're gonna go in favor of, well, we believe every child should have a chance to be vaccinated. When other districts around us aren't doing that, I mean, almost voted overwhelmingly to go mask optional. And that's why I think mask optional is such a great option for everybody involved. If, if you're, if you want to wear a mask, absolutely wear a mask. But then this puts the, you know, the parents and the students in the, get to decide, and then that takes that pressure off the teachers that are, um, you know, policing masks. And, um, I think, I look at that survey of eighty-four percent and it looks to me like the staff is saying, hey, thank you for protecting us all year, we didn't know what we were in for. And now we're ready and, and we want to, we're, we're ready to go mask optional, because we feel safe. And, um, I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding why we think that we can't allow masks optional, that would give everyone their own choice. And if we, and if, if we believe masks work, then the people wearing masks are protecting themselves and I respect that. And I, I just
And what about all the claims that kids aren't wearing them right?
Well, if, so that's a great point. If they're not wearing them right, what, what are we even doing? What's the point at all?
So you're a no, this is changing the policy? Or
No, I'm actually, I'm in favor of changing the policy and, and giving all these different options to Trevor. And say, hey, Trevor, here's the policies, tell us what we can do to go masks optional. That's, I mean, honestly, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
The lawyer can't do that, that's up to us to tell him what we want to see.
But he can help us draft the language in the policy. Right?
And he did last September.
He did, and thank, and I was grateful for how he did a great job, but now, this is a whole, we're, we're in a different stage of this pandemic. And so why can't we bring him in and say, these are all the changes, here's all the information from the parents that are asking us to listen to them? I don't know, I, I'm just, I'm still feeling like we're overstepping. Even though the policy says that we are
Well, it's totally within our purview
What's that?
To do this, and you can ask that of Trevor yourself.
What's that?
We are totally within our purview to set the rules in the building.
Absolutely, I agree with that, I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying that I think we're at a point where we need to present all of the changes that are going on around us and, and ask Trevor to help us draft language that would allow us to, I mean, I'm still, I'm still wishing we could go mask optional for summer school, especially, I mean, if, if, if we're not listening to the parents and the staff, I mean, didn't that email from the counselor about kids that might not graduate affect us at all? I mean, you're rolling your eyes at me.
I am not, I'm, I don't even know what email you're referring to, cause I don't think I got it. What I'm trying to do is figure out if we can come to a compromise. I don't know where anybody else is, I, I can see where you are. I don't, I thought Bruce was where he was. Tree. I mean, we have to have a consensus amongst ourselves and, and then have Trevor draft it, it doesn't work the other way.
Because we have to put whatever we want in the policy, we have to tell Trevor what we want the policy to say.
He doesn't give us
So I think what Roxanne is asking is, she's asking what language he can put in the policy that allows masks optional and doesn't put the district at risk, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the other things that, Mark, I would like to request is that, and perhaps Dave has already done this, consult with our liability insurance. And
I asked Trevor that one time.
And he said that he recommended that we check with our insurance company.
It's, that's okay. So that's why I was going with the recommendation the school board recommends, because we are recommending that you do this, that you keep continuing to wear masks for you. But, or follow county and state, but we're not, we're not even may, we're not even using may, because we're not the ones making, we're telling
I just don't think it's the responsible thing to do with kids who have not even had an opportunity. And I'm actually looking out for their interest at this time. People will not believe me, they'll say, control, control, they'll do whatever. But that's not it, because we can't just agree that we all have good intentions. That's where I'm coming from. So just saying, okay, anybody can do whatever they want right now.
And
Cause I'm not going to vote for it.
And Katie, my
But I'm just the one vote.
My son's only nine and he doesn't care about wearing masks. He'll wear it at home, I mean, honestly, he, he doesn't care at all. And he'd probably still keep wearing it at school. And I'm the one saying, make it optional, and I'm not trying to pull it off him, I mean, he keeps going and wearing it. Great, you know, so I agree that we don't want to put kids at risk, but we're also giving them and
Their parents.
And family and to make that choice to make it optional.
But not for the parents who want their children to be vaccinated first.
But if they continue to wear the mask, they would be
So the email was on May twenty-seventh, um, it was to all of us, three fifty-two PM. I mean, it's, to me, it was just another example of, I mean, I, I, I'm concerned about this group of kids that needs summer school to graduate and, and their parents or the children do not want to wear masks. And I understand that, I don't think, if other districts aren't requiring or they have masks optional, what makes us different? I'm just wondering, what, what makes us think that we can impose this on the entire district? When, again, I'm saying it again, if masks optional appeases everybody and, I mean, and wearing a mask, if we believe it works, should per, I mean, I'm not a medical expert, so I'm not going to say that, but, I mean, it just, it gives the parents and the students more choice.
I come from the point of, our, our main, you know, the board is policy, that's what we do, is create policies for the district. So in my mind, the only way to address it properly with our responsibility is to do it through policy. Not to just say, ah, our policies don't matter right now, because there are other communicable diseases in here that if we were to have an outbreak and then we were to require stuff due to these outbreaks that are on here. And then we get people who say, well, it's not my, I'm not worried about it. Like, it's not just coronavirus right now that this policy affects, and now that coronavirus is in with this policy, it, it's larger than that for me. So I'm for looking at policies, getting legal insight, making sure we're liable, cause that's what our, that's what we're here for. And doing it that way, I'm not for doing it without policy, without doing it properly. I'm, do it properly, cool.
Okay.
I'm not for doing it willingly.
No, and I, I respect that, that's great, I, I respect that. So that's why I just, I'm just wondering where we have, um, I mean, I'm only a year into this school board thing and, you know, definitely my first pandemic on a school board. And I just, and I just want to, I just feel like there's some, there's gotta be something we can do to, to say, hey, things, September, this was a great policy. June, we, things have changed. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at.
That's why I guess I brought it up, because knowing that's or some members standing out to point a finger at you, but
Pointing at everyone else's.
Knowing that, that, hearing that at the last meeting, you saying that, that was kind of the, the, the point here, okay, let's bring this one, let's address this and get some language that would allow this policy to be amended, that we, that we would feel comfortable with, that is still following the policy and isn't just saying, oh, we're taking masks out, but it's changed the policy. So that's what I'm bringing, so if, and I'm hearing Katie, when she's, you know, amending it to people who have the vaccine for a certain amount of time, you know, and if you have some type of amendment to the policy that would help you feel more comfortable, that's why I kind of put it on here, so we could discuss it. I mean, mine was the recommendation of, that would give, then, and I felt it gave people the option to follow it. You know, and breaking, you know, so that, that's why, so I'm, I'm open to whatever.
Hey, we could have a measles outbreak, we could have, that's why for this specific one, it says shall, but it's bigger than coronavirus. Well, that's enveloping our lives right now totally, to have a casual contact communicable disease thing in a school is instrumental to the safety of all students and staff. And shall may, may be something that is worth, but it's, if we do it, you have to, you know, get the liabilities part for Dave, get, get the thing from Trevor and go from there. And then if we can find something cool, if, I'm totally open for it.
So maybe the wrong, not all the policies were put on this one. And maybe if we really had the other, we could have put some language on that one.
The PPE face mask one, this says that we, we shall, the PP face mask one white might give some leeway into how we do it. It, it just, it, it needs work and it's not something that can be done instantly. And while everyone wants it done instantly, and I understand that, we, our role on the board is to ensure that this is working, that, and that it's working not just right now, but for the future. And so I'm hoping that we set something that makes it for if there is a future and something happens, that they're set up and they're not stuck in this place that we are. I don't, I don't wish that on anyone. So I would like to move forward with it, but I'd like to do it correctly.
So you don't want to adjust this policy at all?
No, I'm open to it with the advice of Dave and with the liability thing, cause the liability thing is huge for me, cause there's, let's say hypothetically, someone tries, I mean, my uncle got COVID from this school and he doesn't go here. A student gave it to his dad, his dad works with my uncle, I know his contact traced back to this school. So I know that it's happened, thank heavens he made it out of it, but, um, it, it has happened. And if that were the case, if anything were to fall liability wise, a staff member was to get it that isn't vaccinated, where is our liability on that? Cause that's thousands of, or if a death has occurred, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars on taxpayers. I mean, we are bigger than that, I mean, our responsibility is bigger than that. So that's where I'm coming from.
Well, I'm curious how other schools have adapted, maybe their policy wasn't as strong as ours or something? But I'm wondering how they adapted to that, um, liability piece, because they obviously did.
Or they didn't.
Or
I mean, the boards can vote how they did, and some of them didn't change policies, some went completely against their policy.
Okay.
And if they're comfortable with that, cool.
Okay.
That's, again, that's other boards.
And some of them haven't checked with their liability and they just haven't had a case brought against them yet.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to point out that in a neighboring school district, they have twenty-one grievances filed against them by staff members who, um, are claiming an unsafe work environment because the school board made masks optional. And that is costing the school district thousands and thousands of dollars.
So Mark, is that, is, is this, is this a possibility to, when you said have Dave look at it, you meant Trevor, right?
Liability insurance.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, is it possible for Dave and Trevor to look at our policies? And, I mean, I'm still thinking, is there anything we can do about summer school after reading that email and then just hearing all the comments from the public? I mean, I don't know, like, if we're gonna do this, does it have to wait for our next meeting?
Well
Yeah.
Yeah, it does, it, it does, it really changes policy. You know, that, that's, you're gonna have to wait till next month at least.
So then that's, that's the fourteenth and that's the day summer school starts, right?
Twenty-first, the week after summer school. That's me, it's my after. Yeah, just a couple, we, we've talked about this amongst ourselves with Dave, with the liability, talked to Trevor a number of times. And the liability issue is, is, is very, very minimal in the situation where Trevor's exact words are, they will, to be liable for something, we would have to knowingly, willing, knowingly put somebody in a classroom where we knew COVID was present and they, they can act otherwise.
Yeah, I think
You could sue for anything, but we would really have to be negligent, and that's one of the, the examples he gave to me. So if you knowingly did this, you're going to be liable. I'll double check it all again, and Dave talked with liability insurance. My conversations with the other superintendents, other districts, allowing just set their policy aside and make the decision to do what they get. But that's, that's up to you, I mean, you've got to, this, but we, I, I don't see any avenue before the twenty-first to do anything with it.
Unless the elementary school, or if the schools try to take as much, um, summer school outside as possible, that would be enough.
I think they, I think they do, but I think the lower, I don't know what level it is, it's mostly inside.
I mean, some classes can't be done outside, right? Like, we're painting nails and doing spa treatments, like, outside in a breeze, it's not the most convenient place. I mean, and painting or projects and stuff, it's not the most convenient for some. We tried to schedule as many outside as we could, that's not feasible for all classes that the kids want to take, so.
I will get to Trevor as soon as possible and give whatever I can out to you.
About what, what is he gonna be doing?
Well, just look, um, how we could give you some options on re crafting the policy. And again, personally, I'd rather see you guys in control and have the option to do things rather than, you know, by policy right now, you have to, we have to do what St. Craig County Health recommends and what have you.
You don't, I, I understand, and to me that, I have a hard time with that part, because I don't know why we, and I understand the politicization of this, and I understand the politicization of this, but I don't understand why we wouldn't weigh in with the experts. I, I don't understand that part of it. I, I understand that it's political now, but it, it, let's take coronavirus, so, let's say we had a measles outbreak at the school. We would totally follow what the county tells us to do, because they're familiar with it. I don't know why we would suggest that we would know more than epidemiologists and medical doctors and all of these people who do advise us. And I understand the politi, I understand that it's happening, but I can't see it from that side, because I'm not those experts. If I was an expert, I'd get it more, but I do have to.
Okay, but wait a second, because we've had a couple of things talked about, and he, um, Trevor can't draft us policy changes unless we have,
Unless we give him direction.
What to do. So, I made a recommendation for what I thought was a compromise. And, um, you know, looking at a certain number of weeks. And then, what?
Yeah, start with that. Start with that one, and then start with a, a may, switching this language to may follow. If, and see what he says.
Okay.
As a start, as a starting point of something to move, so we're not just-
Are you clear?
No.
I will send you an email.
Totally. And I am totally not on board with saying may, especially with the previous COVID fever.
No, 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 that was not it. It was shall for that, and put a separate paragraph for COVID.
Yeah, separate paragraph, like COVID was broken out, which I, I hear, but the COVID was broken out in its own paragraph to say, may
Yes.
Follow, and it was, it was with that paragraph three.
Yeah, no, you had me confused.
I got it.
The other thing I'd like to say is, I am not a public health expert, and I do not feel comfortable that a school board is making public health decisions. So, that's why I would like to, that's why I think we should be following public health experts' advice. I am not a public health expert.
But aren't we giving that control to the parents, not to us, who are allowing the parents to make that decision?
And I want to take the advice of public health experts in the rules that we set in a public school. Uh, the next item on the agenda then is public access to board meetings. St. Craig County has reduced its, uh, risk level to high the last time I checked, which was this morning. So, I'm thinking that it's still at high. And the, uh, recommendations at that point are to have no more than 25 people in a room. So, it would be my suggestion that we count the board members and staff members who are required to be here, and then allow whatever additional number is available. Does anybody have-
Do you want to make it in a larger room?
Do we have a larger room?
No, is it available now?
The only thing about a larger room to consider is that the sound and streaming capabilities are not the same.
No.
And they are not as, they're bad.
Yes. Um, like, we've had them before in the media.
What about, I mean, we had the, the signing day in the gym with the camera, maybe, that was on YouTube, that was sure easy to hear, and could be pointed at the board in the gym. Is that a problem? Are people using the gym Monday at 5:30?
The gym's getting ripped off this summer.
Yeah.
Multi-purpose room?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, the, oh. Is it something where we have the maximum of people in here, and then people wait outside to, to just come in? I mean, so that everybody can just kind of filter through?
Is there's public comment, you're saying?
Yeah.
So, you only have 25 people in the room?
Multi-purpose. Can we stream out of there?
Sounds like no.
Well, it, it, there would have to be a significant amount of-
Work?
Yes.
Okay.
So, maybe it's a-
What about those rooms back there?
Where?
In this building?
They're not much bigger than this.
You can open that thing up in between.
No, that's what we want to do. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, so we can get 12 more people in here. So, is it to your setup to 25, if that's what we go with? But allow public comment, so you have people able to move in. I don't know how you'd really.
Well, that's, that's what other, some other districts have done. They've just limited, if they're just there for comment, they have to leave.
Well, they can still, you know,
Or you can, you know, you can.
Even if they're not in here.
They can be in other rooms with monitors.
Oh, that's true.
So, I think that's what the county.
Yes, yeah.
So.
But they have more active people.
Well, I mean, I, I think, I'd like, I mean, I'd like them open another 25 at least, or at least allow public comment to be, you know, in person, so we're not calling in anymore.
Well, let's do some work on a larger side. We'll talk about this tomorrow then, and see what the possibilities are with quality.
Okay.
So, this item will come back to the regular session?
So.
Are you gonna go with 25 for the 21st meeting?
So, that's what I'm wondering. Are we able to say, are we able to make a motion tonight that we'd open the meeting on the 21st? Or could I make a motion? I don't see it, but I'd-
Yeah, it doesn't say.
I would like to make a motion to open the June-
There's nothing on here about action.
There's not an action.
I don't know, I guess I don't know enough about Holly's work, but I think we've made motions before on items.
I do think in this particular situation that because it's a board, it's a function of the board, I don't think anybody's gonna come in and have, be angry with us because we made a decision. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I don't know the intricacies of.
So, are you saying he can't make that motion?
What, what risk am I putting us at?
Well, I don't, it's, because it's a, just a board.
Well, how would, I mean-
It's an, it's like a, well, it is public, but we're opening it up, so I don't think people will be upset. And if they are, they would rather, they'll stay home.
They won't come, or, no, well.
Except the administrators would have to come.
Well, they don't have to come.
Well, they could come in remotely to, if they chose.
So, I, I'll, I'll make a motion if it gets
Ordinarily don't.
Something shut down. Anyway, can we, can I make a motion to open the June 21st regular session to 25 people?
Up to 25?
Up to 25 in the room at a time.
And right now, our pow, right now's masks are required in school. So, if you're one of those 25 people, you have to have a mask on.
It's, it's in the recommendations from the St. Craig County, so yes, you would have to wear a mask, because that's P12.
And, um, but if they're in the age group where they could have been vaccinated, is that a-
Are teachers and we are all vaccinated, and we're still wearing them?
Because that's the rules here. I mean, you can be outside and it's fine, but not here. We haven't changed it yet.
I will second that.
So, motion by Bruce, second by Sheree. Uh, Tasia, would you read it back to us?
Yep. To allow in-person attendance at board meetings beginning June 21st with a maximum of 25 persons in attendance, including board members, administrators, and other required staff, and all people in attendance must wear a mask.
Thank you. All right, so we've got a motion on the floor. Any further questions or discussion?
Can I just clarify? Is it 25 people total, or let's say there are 40 people that want to come, and they want to make a statement? Can they, can, can 40 people come, but only 25 in the room at a time?
25 in the room at a time.
And, and can we do an overflow room if we have more than that? That can watch by-
I'm sure we can, but we'll talk, we'll figure out the logistics of that, see what we're capable of doing.
I mean, we have a pretty good idea of how they feel.
Yeah, no kidding.
It's good to see them face to face.
All right, any further questions or discussion or comments?
No, except can you bring that policy to the board meeting, and then we should change it that night?
The 84, 54?
Our OR meetings.
Oh, yes.
Since we just voted to-
Go against their policy?
Just a second please. I'm not sure which policy.
The board's own policy.
The board's policy on what?
On how we're handling meetings, on remote versus-
Okay, I don't think we changed that in policy. We changed that in our agenda.
It was just part of our protocol.
I know, but we just voted on it. So, what I'm saying is maybe bring that policy, or do you want to bring that in?
I'll check.
Okay.
Is it just a meeting policy?
Yes. Our own.
Okay, further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Topics for action. We've got the athletic activities personal update, and the other personnel update, and the rule invoices. Would anybody care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve A1 and 2, and B1.
And Tasia, will you include the amount?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so Bruce has made a motion. Would anyone care to second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, what's around the table? Roxanne, did you have anything?
Yeah, so, listening to the parents calling in, I counted six people, and I also had someone reach out to me, so seven that I know of total that really want to see this parent survey. Is there a plan for sending out a parent survey?
Not unless you want one.
Um, well, a lot of parents are asking that their voices be heard, um, and I, um, about the, the mask debate, so I, I really do want to listen to them and, and speak up for them. Um, I was asked about, uh, high schoolers attending BFS. If they're vaccinated, do they have to wear masks? But then, at the same time, I don't think we can really ask if they're vaccinated. So, I think we're gonna run into that issue with BFS.
We can ask, we can't require, but we can ask.
We can ask, and, and whatever, so, so the question was, my child will be vaccinated, and I don't want him wearing a mask at BFS. So, it's just something to think about this summer. Um, and I just, you know, really encourage everybody to read that email from our, our counselor. And, um, I guess that's about it right now. Sheree?
All right, so I created quite an uproar at our last meeting, and I wanted to provide some clarification for the comments that I made um, at the June 24th meeting. So, everything that I stated was exact quotes from our teachers in the survey that was sent out. So, uh, it was, anyone vaccinated should not be required to immediately, um, optional for, with confirmed vaccination requests. Uh, once they prove into the building nurse, so those are the exact same quotes that I said the last time through. That came from the teachers. So, um, if anyone was upset with my metaphor, my apologies, but it certainly was, uh, comments that I didn't come up with, and I would strongly suggest you get a copy of those comments yourself, so you can see what, uh, some of these teachers stated. Um, for our clerks, the comments at our retreat on Saturday, June 5th, I also want to apologize to any board members that got backlash from our community, and I want to just ask our community for grace in everything that we have going on. Um, I had heard comments that there were board members that were not aware of this special session, uh, at work or different things, and, you know, please just give some grace to everybody. We are all doing the very best we can. I know Patty Jo responded right away that she had some other commitments, and, um, I know that we weren't able to hear from some of the other uh, school board members, and this had other, you know, didn't know about the meeting or whatever was happening. So, it would be great to start with some grace about all of that. Yep, yep. So, uh, but that being said, you know, when we open up our documents, I know that we have the ability to see who else is in the document at the time. So, um, one of the things, Dr. Beazak, I don't know if you are able to provide, I would like to see if we can get a history of who was able to access that, and, and, you know, just to ensure that everybody is on the up and up, and, and we're being truthful, and, and our clerk isn't putting up with any extra stress due to trying to do the right thing for our community and supporting our constituents. Um, of the school perceptions review tonight or overview, uh, of course, I wasn't on the board when that took place. And I was heartbroken reading a number of the comments that came through on that regarding our school board. And there's a lot of work to do. Um, comments like, and, and these are direct quotes again, people, so don't make TikTok videos of me. "It's a very toxic environment. A school board member or two have been very, have been on social media, not shedding a great light on our district. The tone used with, with each other is not always respectful. It feels sneaky and untrustworthy. It has a negative communication, and sometimes not everyone's voices or opinions are heard. Seeing word members rolling their eyes, looking at each other with sarcasm, arguing, we need professional school board members. I have well over 10 candidates for potential jobs telling me they would not consider coming to Somerset due to what they heard about our board. And the biggest stressors of my job by far, and something that would cause me to leave our school, is the school board and the dynamics within. This professional mediation has to get scheduled, and we have to do it sooner than later, because our teachers, our staff deserve so much more, and we need to support them in every way we possibly can. And if that means our board coming to terms with what our differences are, we've got to start working together, and I will be a part of that solution, and I hope we can get that scheduled very soon."
Thank you.
I don't not have any.
Um, I would like to state that I did see the notice, but I had a previous commitment, so was unable to attend. So, because people did not show up does not mean that there was an ulterior motive. It means that people were not consulted about whether or not they were available, and they weren't available. Katie?
I've got nothing.
Marge?
And I also was not available. I work, and I cannot just leave my patients and leave work.
And you told us that.
And I got, I looked at the notice at 7 o'clock at night after the meeting was done, and I got raked over the coals for not being there to a meeting I could not attend. And I just want people to know, we are not trying to control their lives. We are going by the recommendations of the experts. So, um, they can take that for what it's worth, I don't know. But, um, I know a couple of them tonight made comments on, um, how we're trying to control them and control their children, and we're, that's not what we're here for. We're interested in safety and health of the staff and the children. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Marge, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, meeting is adjourned at 9:20.